Okay, I want to welcome everyone to our Monday, January twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen, City Council Work Session. The time now is six o'clock. I'm going to welcome the council and everyone here in the audience, and also those who are watching us on cable. First item on the agenda is discussion of possible May two thousand and eighteen bond election with our financial consultant, Mark McLean. Uh, will Ms. Fung be, uh, introducing this, or Mr.?
No, I was just going to briefly introduce Mark. Um, he's been working on the bond numbers. Um, Mayor and Council, you should all have that in your, your agenda packet, and he's here to discuss, uh, the printout and also to answer any questions that you may have about it. Mark?
And my understanding is this is in your all's agenda packet. If not, I have loose ones available. Um, I've been talking with, uh, city staff regarding the possible, uh, bond issuance. So we've talked about this even back to last year. Because you're in a position right now where you have your current debt service dropping off, a big stair step. Um, if you look on that sheet, this year, the year we're fiscal year in, we're now, if you're looking at, I'm going to say the, the existing debt service column. You have payments supported by your interest in sinking fund tax of four million four. Next year, it drops to three million. And you're going to see it continue to drop, and you're completely paid off in two thousand and thirty-three. We've talked about with council, but also with staff about this summer issuing bonds for projects if you have them, and if you want to move, move forward so that you can take advantage of the drop in debt service. So as we approached today's meeting, visiting with Keith and Jennifer, it was, we're looking at thirty-four point four million dollar issue or bond election items. So we ran that, and I tried to run it as conservatively as possible. Uh, we've got a lot of things going, a lot of momentum right now. These bonds would be paid for from the INS portion of your tax rate, so it would be tax-supported. So as your taxable values grow, the lower the INS tax rate impact would be. The last couple of years, we've seen some very good jumps in taxable value. With items going on, on eight-twenty, with the construction on the north side and on the south side, I think our projections for taxable value are low. I'm showing a three percent tax rate for three years and zero, I'm sorry, a three percent growth rate on your taxable values for three years, and then zero growth after that. We used a twenty-year amortization schedule on the potential thirty-four million dollars worth of bonds, and we used a four and a quarter percent borrowing rate. You're talking about, and you're seeing the economy doing very well, and interest rates have moved up. If you would sell today, you'd be closer to three and a half percent. So I'm putting in seventy-five basis points higher interest rate than it is today, but we don't know when you're going to eventually sell. So I'm going to try to give a worst-case scenario. And if you see that, right in the middle, there's the proposed series two thousand and eighteen. So what this assumes is that you have a call-in election in February, have the election in May, and sell them this summer. It also assumes we're selling all thirty-four million. That is not a decision that we've made, and it's not, and it will be a decision that you all will have to make if we want to do them all or some this year. If, if the entire thirty-four million dollar package is approved, City Council will have to decide, do we want to break it into two issues, three issues, or just do it all as one issue? So I'm looking at this as one bond issue. And you'll see, we set the, the payments other than the very first year roughly increasing for three years and then dropping as, as the other, then leveling off, I'm sorry. So we work our way to two million six. And the reason we have that, if you look in the, the principal column, there's six hundred and ninety thousand dollars worth of principal in year one. The most conservative reading that the Attorney General has for us is that we have to pay two percent of principal each year, approximately two percent. So we have to pay some principal. So in this case, two, six hundred and ninety thousand is roughly two percent of, of our bond issue. And then two percent, you can see every year thereafter is a larger number, so we're not jeopardizing that. We've had the Attorney General waive that before, but we're trying to show, again, worst-case scenario so that you alls can make decisions. This gets us to total debt service that we're going to be at five million two, increasing eventually to five million five before it starts to lower again. And then if you look at the far-right-hand column, this is what the tax rate impact would be. Your current tax rate for your INS taxes is twenty-one point three. If you sold them all, under these assumptions, it would go to twenty-four cents, twenty-four thirty-six. Stay there before it starts declining. And we've put in, again, the stair steps. We can structure this differently, but if we move principal out in the earlier years, we're pushing it in the back years, which then gets rid of the stair step, and the stair step is the opportunity in the future to do new projects or to move tax rate from the INS side to the M and O side. Choices that you as a council can make, uh, as that goes forward. So if you said, if, if you ask, so we want to sell all thirty-four million dollars, and with the assumptions that I have now, I would be suggesting that the tax rate, the INS tax rate would go roughly from twenty-one, three to twenty-four, three to get those done. I think that's going to be lower than that, but one of the things that we have to put in the ordinance, uh, calling a bond election is a conservative number on what we think the tax rate impact would be, and that was, those would be the numbers I would use. There's lots of different ways to skin the cat, once the bonds have been approved. But this is probably the most conservative, uh, showing that I could give you all as a city council. At direction from you, we can make changes, and as we get closer to an actual bond sale, we will be looking at structuring it the way you want to see it, uh, as close, as close as possible. That's the basic information I have here about what the impact would be on thirty-four million dollar bond election. And Mayor, I'll turn it back to you or address any questions, uh, specific questions or just general thoughts?
Thank you, Mr. McLean. Uh, we do have a question from, or a comment from Councilmember Walter Group. See, your light was on.
No, I guess that was inadvertent.
Oh, okay, no problem. Uh, are there any questions or comments from anyone? Uh, Councilmember Fowler?
Thank you, Mr. McLean. Um, okay, so you're looking at, there wouldn't be another drop-off for any, we wouldn't realize anything other than after the first, it'd take seven years to get to that point. What do we, Mr. Manager, forecast? I just, I'm just curious about front-loading it this way. Do we have any other projects as far as that we know that we're going to have to issue bonds on as far as street, water infrastructure, any of that, that will affect? Of course, water's different, different animal, but, um, any general fund obligations that we'd need to potentially go out for that we might need to adjust this for any reason?
Uh, we, we do still have some bonds from the two thousand and ten bond election that have not been issued.
Okay, but do we, but do you, I mean, or is there anything that you would envision as far as street projects or anything that we would need to go out for bond in the next seven years?
Not that I know of. Greg, off the top of your head?
A street that comes to my mind is Broadway, east of Denton Highway. However, that was on our capital improvements plan. The, it looks like we'll be able to get a no-interest loan, a ten- or twelve-year loan through the North Central Texas Council of Government. That project's estimated at six million. I don't know that, off the top of my head, I could tell you what that would come out as an annualized rate over ten or twelve years. So that's one major street, and I think Midway was also on there. However, we could delay that. But those are the only two streets that we have under an engineering contract. Those are, if you'll recall, in the annual budget, we had an engineering firm hired to design quite a few streets. However, financially, we can't afford to do them all at once, so as we can afford them, we've been releasing them. So we could work that into the current fiscal year budget.
Okay, one other question. What about the, we're making improvements at the, uh, one-twenty-one, Carson Street Bridge project currently, and I know that's already funded and all, but logically, the next step in that would be to go to either, what, Walthall or Bellknap?
The next step would go from, be from Thomas to Bellknap.
Would, would that, um, is, I know that would be partly a, it would probably be a shared?
A drainage, and we could fund that out of?
Drainage utility?
Right. Um. Now, that's how we're funding quite a bit right now out of the drainage utility, so we'd probably have to increase the amount that, uh, we're putting into that fund.
Well, and I'm just, like I say, I'm just, I, I don't have a problem with this. I'm just trying to forecast anything that, you know, and be prepared for, i- if we have something that's going to, you know, we're planning on in the next, you know, that's seven years. It doesn't seem like a long time, and in, in one essence, it's not, but then in another, you know, when you're forecasting infrastructure improvements, you know, three, four, five years out, it's not, not really that long.
Yeah, that's one of the reasons that when we talked to John Polster, um, and John Polster told us about the COG, the, the ability for us to get a no-interest loan from COG, that's why Greg pursued that pretty hard to track that down, and we're allowed to pay it over, what, I think the max is twelve years, Greg, is that right? So, you know, it's something half a million dollars a year. You know, we could, we could potentially fit that on the M and O side. We wouldn't have to issue debt for it, so that's one of the reasons that Greg went after that pretty hard to nail them down with that.
And, and one thing, and, and I think you're getting to this ex- exact point. If we knew, if we started working through and say, let's say we said twenty-twenty-two, we need a six-million-dollar project, but we don't want to have the tax rate go higher. You could s- take, if you look at the principal column, roughly five hundred thousand dollars a year from twenty-two through twenty-four or twenty-five, and remove that and s- spread it out between twenty-six and thirty-eight, and putting a five-hundred-thousand-dollar drop in two thousand and twenty-four. And it's, it's one of those things, personally, I'd like to see those drop-offs because business decisions, you, you'd like to be able to do a project if it comes up without dedicating new taxes towards it. If you could build in a stair step, those are the things that, you know, we would want to build in if we know there's projects coming.
Well, and that's the reason I ask, and I appreciate, you know, you explaining that is, so what you're, what you're explaining is that six hundred and ninety, which is the, roughly the two percent that's required. We could, we could offload some of that from that million, where, where you start in twenty-twenty-one. At a million eight, you could offload four, five hundred thousand of that, and then transfer it to twenty, twenty-twenty-six and?
To a few years down the road, when there's a drop, when there's a bigger drop-off, you know, you'll see we go under the total debt service. We work our way to five million five, and then by two thousand and twenty-six, we're at four million seven.
Right.
So you could, you push a few years there and push it in the back. This is a very structured, flat debt service schedule as is. So adjusting a little bit to build in a stair step would not be hard to do and would not be frowned upon because we'd still be paying off so much of our principal quickly.
It would, it would just affect you on the, on the tail end with your interest payment then?
Correct.
Increase that a little bit?
Correct.
Just off the top of your head, those, so, so if you were to bump that down to, say, half a million from, you know, four or five years, what do you, how do you think that would affect it?
Um.
As far as?
I, you mean total interest repaid? I bet you would pick up, uh, I bet you'd pick up three hundred thousand dollars of extra interest over, over that time. If we took four hundred thousand, five hundred thousand for four or five years, so we're taking two million out and pushing it on the back end, I bet it would, would add up to be two or three hundred thousand, three or four hundred thousand.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. McLean.
Thank you, Councilmember Fowler. Uh, Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Lane, you, you mentioned unissued bonds. Exactly how much do we have out in unissued bonds from past bond elections?
Uh, Jennifer, come up here and correct me if I'm wrong. I think on parks, we're right around three million we have left.
I think both are about two million dollars each.
Two each for streets and parks?
Yeah. I think it's two point four or five for parks and two point something for streets, so I can give you the exact number if I look at it.
Okay, yeah, if you don't mind getting that from Mr. Brown.
Thank you. Uh, and then, Mr. McLean, I guess this would be for you. Um, is this a normal practice to sell off all the bonds at one time and start paying the interest?
And, and that's a great question. Um, what we're talking about with, with staff is two propositions. Um, so what we want to know is how much can you spend in a year? So when you sell bonds, you're asked, uh, to sign a certificate saying you're going to spend this bond issue down, you're going to attempt to spend eighty-five percent of it in the first three years. So if you said two, two propositions, we're not getting to proposition two for two years. Or we're going to do proposition, the, you know, the first proposition the first year, and then do the second one, two years down the road or three years down the road. Um, I would suggest you break it up. If you're going to come in as a council and make prior, we need to build both these facilities as fast as we can, then I would suggest we sell them all at the same time. I know this council in the past has heard me talk about bank-qualified bonds. Selling ten million or less in a year, calendar year, we used to see forty to fifty basis point lower interest rate if you kept it ten million or less in a year. The tax law, and that was for, it, it meant that the city issued bonds as bank-qualified, and banks could buy the bonds and not have to pay any taxes on them. Well, their tax rate with this tax law change has gone from thirty-six percent to twenty-one percent. We're seeing that bank-qualified benefit, instead of being forty basis points, uh, being now pushed down to twenty basis points. So the question that we, a year ago, I was, had split this up and do it in two different calendar years. Um, twenty basis point difference benefit in an interest rate, in a market that's seeing interest rates rise, could cost you by waiting another year. If interest rates rise fifty basis points and you gain twenty basis points, you're thirty basis points in the? If interest rates rise fifty basis points and you gain twenty basis points, you're thirty basis points in the hole. That being said, spend and borrow the money when you wanna spend it. Everybody's been saying interest rates are going to skyrocket for the last five or six years, and they haven't. So if you can't get the money spent, or you're not building and constructing within a year, I would certainly suggest you break it into more than one issue. Those are the decisions that this council's gotta make. You, uh, and then Keith will be able to say, we're designing and going, and we're gonna be building by January. We need the money to start awarding contracts, and I don't know, I'm, I'm, I don't know what those dates would be. But you are gonna need to get it approved, and you are gonna need engineering money. And so if all of a sudden we wanna do it in multiple issues, and we're gonna go start right now in May, and we're gonna, it's approved, we're gonna go as fast as we can, but it's gonna take nine months to a year to do architectural design. Well, perhaps you say, let's issue ten million in year one. And that's gonna get us to do all the architecture, get the land, get everything set up, and the moment we're going out for biddings, we can then go out and sell the second series. Those are, those timing, I just can't opine to it at this point. Um, and as we get closer, you, you will, you all will need to make that decision. So, uh, do cities issue the entire amount at one time? Very often. Do they break it up? Uh, I try to get them broken up, um, if it's going to be over a multiple year process of getting these projects completed. And, and remember, the bonds would be voted and unapproved, so it's not like a certificate of obligation where you have to, uh, where you could be petitioned down the road. A council can elect to sell general obligation bonds that are approved at any time. So, you know, certificate of obligation, you, as council, does a notice of intention, and if you're petitioned, you can't issue them. So then you're stuck with a half-built project. Here, the money is available for you when you're ready to borrow it. So you're without the risk.
And, and we don't have to pay for the bonds sitting out there. We don't have to pay any origination points, anything like that to hold the bonds
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Yeah, if we only had a crystal ball, right? Uh, what else? That was it. That was it. Uh, I guess this would be for, on the three million, two, three million dollars that we have outstanding, if we do run short on this project, can we go to, or those specific bonds for parks, streets? If we did run short on this issue that we're about to, we cannot use any of the
Yeah, those are specific to parks.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, just to answer the question, um, for the street and, um, bonds is about two point three eight million dollars, and for the parks is two point eight million dollars. Both are two point something. So altogether is five point, five point one eight, um, unissued.
Thank you, Ms. Fong.
Uh, Councilmember Fowler?
Uh, Mr. McLoney, on the, the cost of re- of issuance of two separate, uh, uh, you know, two separate bond issuances, it's not that much for that, is it really?
Um, you will pay more to have two issuances because it, the first borrowing dollar is the most expensive. But if, if we're talking thirty-four million dollars, um, you'd probably pick up twenty-five thousand of the extra costs, uh, because there's two bond ratings, um, and that'd be the biggest difference because bond lawyers and financial advisors buy the par amount on a declining scale. Um, but the bond rating, you're gonna get probably a fifteen thousand dollar bond rating fee for the second bond issue by itself.
So you're gonna have some additional costs, but yet you may save that in, in deferred interest?
Well, you certainly will. Um, and one of the other items is it, it, it may be, you know, you all may say as a council, instead of going to twenty-four cent, we're okay going to twenty-four cents. But instead of doing it in one year, can we do it in two years or three years? And you can build that in with multiple issues. So it may be, it might cost you a little bit more, and it might cost you a little bit more interest because you're spreading it out. You're adding two twenty-year issues, so you're now going twenty-one years. So you might get a little more interest there, but you may get the benefit of, uh, a lower tax rate over the time.
Okay.
There's the, unfortunately, there's not a specific, correct answer. It's going to be as you work through, as the bonds are called and approved, and you get a timetable of the construction, we can come up with all sorts of different scenarios. Um, if you said, like, you know, so we have five million one, let's leave in two years or three years the ability to use that money. So then we're gonna structure a stair step so that we don't have a twenty-four cent going to a twenty-six cent in two years or three years. So those are the things that, that as we approve this and before we sell it, when we sell it, things are locked in. And so I would suggest after the election, we have additional workshop where we, you know, get your input, um, and say, okay, this is what we see and what we would like, and then we can really structure this. We'd be closer to a bond sale where we can get more accurate interest rate numbers. In June, we're getting appraised values, so we'll have better appraised values, um, and can give you real numbers. But I think if you are making a decision and you think this thirty-four four is a position where you think as a council you'll be, I'd be comfortable saying you won't get above twenty-four point three six cent tax rate. And we, there's a lot of things we can do to work around that also. Uh, but it's going to be higher than twenty-one three unless you call and, and wish for lower, uh, borrowing amount. But there's just so many unanswered questions in January that will get answered as we get more, uh, as, as your voters speak, and as we get closer to a sponsor where we know what the interest rates will be and what your taxable values will be next year.
Uh, well, and one other que- I mean, I hope that we, you know, assuming this bond passes, I hope that we move a little more expeditiously on construction than we have with twenty-ten issues, 'cause I, you know, I think seven, eight years out, it's a little lengthy in my opinion on, you know, debt that was, should have been issued for improvements. That's what it was voted on, so hopefully that wouldn't affect the, you know. Uh, you know, one thing, e- especially when you're talking about, you know, larger projects like this, that's where you can get some changing costs, and typically, it's not gonna go, costs are not gonna go down, where they're typically gonna go higher, so I think it would be in our best interest to move more rapidly than it would.
And, and you would have the ability to, and that, this is, we could do, when you call the bond election, do a reimbursement resolution at the same time, and you could start all of the engineering and architectural stuff now, and the first check when you sell the bonds is back to your fund. So perhaps you spend four hundred thousand dollars in architectural fees between now and then, or buy the land, or whatever, you know, I'm, I'm not completely privy of the whole project. So money that you have in your general fund, you could spend towards this project if you do a reimbursement resolution, and when you sell the bonds, the first check written is back to your general fund. So that would be something I would suggest, and if, if speed is that important, um, and, and you're right, what we see is construction costs going up, um, is you can get things going and with a approved bond issue, be out to bid, maybe in July or August, instead of six months down the road.
Okay, and this is a question for staff. Mr. Lane, does this, the, the thirty-four point four, I know you've, you've said you felt comfortable with it, but do you foresee, I mean, if there were a delay for a year or so, or, or we did it like we talked about in two phases, if it took, for some reason, something came up? Do, are we confident that that's enough to, you know?
I, I believe so. Everybody, and you saw last week all the sources that I cited that I got the information from, everybody was pretty solid on three seventy for the combined facility for the next year. Um, same thing with the fire station, the three-ten figure that I gave you. All the sources were, were solid with that.
Thank you, Councilmember Fowler. Uh, Councilmember Grove?
Yeah, I would, just because, just with the work sessions that we had, particularly at the library, when uh, David Campbell quoted the four hundred dollar, when, when we first talked about this, we were talking about two hundred dollars or two fifty a square foot. And then it jumped up to four hundred dollars plus a square foot, so from the way it looks, you know, issuing all the bonds at one shot to get both buildings erected simultaneously, or, you know, one, a crew either working on the fire station first that moves from there to the uh, combined city hall police and starts working on that building. And just, you know, kinda like how housing manufacturers, they go from one lot to the next lot, they just move the crew to all the lots, 'cause I'm just looking at this, the, the cost, it's going up daily, it seems like, so I think the faster we can get on it, the better we're gonna be off. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Grove. Uh, Dr. Trong?
That's your question here, and, uh, I know the longer we wait, the more money we have to spend. I wish we had done this over five years ago, you know. By the way, I saw the, uh, proposed here you sent to us. Twenty year is the obligation from issue bond or what? What if we do like fifteen, do we save a lot of money and the I, IRS, you know, tax rate would be lower or what?
No, the, uh, if we shorten it, and that is, it, that is an option, then the tax rate's gonna be higher. You'll pay less interest over the term of the loan.
Okay.
But the annual payment's going to increase, and the only way to handle that is with a higher tax rate. So one of the things we wanna match, to make sure that we're not shortchanging, is a loan length, at least the length of the useful life of the project. Well, in both these instances, we're gonna be using this project. I would be more comfortable going twenty-five years than I would be with a lower tax rate than going thirty, I mean, than going fifteen years with a higher tax rate.
Okay.
Um, that would be my personal preference, 'cause it just, would just take too much of a tax rate, and then that, of course, lands on burden on the taxpayers.
Thank you.
That's my question.
Thank you, Doc Trong. Are there any other questions or con- Councilmember Brown, do you have a question?
Yes, Mr. McLoney, and on that, that you just touched on, is there a early penalty for early payoff?
Well, you, we would put a, a call date where you can pay these bonds off early, um, probably nine years out. Um, really what happens there, though, is you're gonna still owe probably, you know, roughly eighteen million dollars on it. You're not gonna have eighteen million dollars of cash. That really is only an opportunity to refinance. Um, and when you refinance, you could lengthen it, but then there's no cost benefit. Um, so yes, you would have the ability to repay. You'll know, and we've done it many, many times, we've done refinancings here where we lowered the payments. What, if you talk to the people in our industry or economists, we may not see ten years from now, we're at an opportunity to get, refinance this at lower interest rates. If the market keeps going back up and, and people talk about twenty and thirty-year interest rate cycles, well, we've been in a low interest rate cycle for a long time. Are we gonna see it go up and be at five or six percent? Very possibly. Um, but having the call option gives the council of future the ability, if rates are lower, to refinance it. You would have the ability to restructure it um, at that time, but that would be, that would be, I, I don't see a seventeen or eighteen million cash infusion where you could just take the money and pay it off. Um, perhaps if someone benefits you and, and the city has it and wants to do it, and you would have that right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Are there any other questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, uh, excellent presentation. Thank you, Mr. McLoney. Uh, Mr. City Manager, now I know this is, this was just for, uh, discussion, but what direction, if any, do you need, uh, from the council?
Uh, none, Mayor. Uh, Andrew's gonna be here on the twelfth, correct? Andrew Freedom will be here on the twelfth, Mayor, in case there are any questions that come up between now and then.
And can you just refresh our memory, when do we need to call for the election for May?
On the twelfth.
On the twelfth.
Before the sixteenth, but it'll be on, the meeting is on the twelfth.
Okay. Everybody okay with that?
If, if
Yes, sir.
May, uh, can I put the reimbursement resolution on? Reimbursement resolution, again, allows you to pay yourself back with bond proceeds. It doesn't force you to pay yourself back. But it will give you the options. If you wanna move this project forward fast, you could start spending city money and pay yourself back, and I think it makes sense to have that in place, um, if you all think that's important.
Uh, Councilmember Fowler, do you have a question or a comment?
Yeah, Mr. McLoney, is that required as, as far as to be written into?
It would be a separate resolution.
Resolution.
And, and it's for the IRS. It's not a state law issue. It's, uh, in the unlikely event you're audited and you write yourself back a check, the, the IRS is gonna ask, what gave you permission to use tax exempt proceeds to pay yourself back?
So it'd just be a separate instrument from the bond?
Correct, correct. And it, it does not force you to use it. It just allows you, if you elect to, um, at the time.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for that clarification. Seeing no other questions or comments, we'll now, uh, adjourn at, what time is it? It's six thirty-five, and we'll convene to convene to executive session pursuant to five fifty-one oh seven one and oh seven two. The Texas government code is six, six thirty-six.
Okay, I want to welcome everyone to our January twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen City Council, uh, work session. The time now is seven oh seven. First item on the agenda is the invocation and pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Walter Grove. Would you please stand?
Please bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, I want to thank you for this wonderful day and the beneficial rains that we had this weekend. And we ask that you watch over our first responders and our public servants, our public works, uh, personnel. And please give this council the wisdom to do, to make the best decisions for the city. We ask this in your son's name. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I honor the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Councilmember Watkins. Moving right along to our reports. Our City Secretary, Art Camacho. Oh, I'm sorry, not reports, uh, the, uh, okay. Okay, start with our monthly financial reports. Jennifer Fung.
Mayor and the City Council, it's a pleasure to present to you the December, November, and December financial reports. Okay, here we go. Okay, as you see there, since we haven't presented November reports, so we are doing it all together. So I'm showing you the October, November, and December numbers. And for revenue, up to the end of December, we have about nineteen million dollars, which is about twenty-seven percent for the year. And for expenditure, we have about fourteen point eight million dollars, which is about seventeen percent. So our fund balance, uh, as a city as a whole is about thirty-three point seven million dollars. And the largest fund for the city, the general fund, you can see that, um, we have revenue of about eight point nine million dollars, which is about thirty-two percent for the year. And the expenditure is seven, um, seven point five million dollars, about twenty-six percent. So our general fund balance right now is at seven point seven million dollars. And looking at the public tax revenue, you can see that, um, we receive about forty-seven percent for the year already. As you know, that most taxpayer will pay their public tax in December and January. And for this year, most people paid, um, their public tax because they are triggering the tax law next year. But I don't think it will affect us that much here anyway. Okay, and for the sales tax, the revenue, um, right now we are at, I think, twenty-seven or twenty-eight percent already. And you can see that the sales tax is pretty strong, and, um, I would like to see it continue to be strong for the year. And looking at the, uh, comparison for the previous two years, you can see that the purple one is for this year. Um, the only exception is November because we have, last year, we have an adjustment here, so that's why the, um, the revenue is very, very high there. But if you look at normally, we still doing very well in November for, uh, this year. And so, um, currently, if you look at what we have, if we only compared last year, we are up three point nine percent. Um, this is the calendar year. So are there any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Fung. Are there any questions for Ms. Fung regarding the, uh, financial report? Seeing none? Okay, thank you. Excellent presentation. And moving on to the quarterly investment report. Again.
Okay, the quarterly investment report, looking at the composition here, you can see that usually December is really supposed to be the lowest for the year because usually we haven't received all the, um, revenue, the public tax yet, and... But when you look at it, October, we have thirty-nine point seven eight, um, million dollars. And at the end of December, we are down a little bit, thirty-nine point seven. Usually it's much lower. But it seems that our cash position is pretty good. And, um, since the interest rate increased quite a lot for the last year, it increased more than seventy-five, uh, basis point. And you can see that the unrealized loss is a little bit more than the previous quarter. But as you know that when we invest in these securities, we are not paying to sell it way away. So the loss will be unrealized. That means we will not have actual losses because we will hold the security until maturity. So, um, when you look at the interest, um, the accrual for the quarter is about sixty thousand dollars. And our weighted average maturity is about four hundred and eight days. And the yield to, um, the yield is one point two eight percent, which is a little bit higher than the previous quarter. But if you look at the six-month treasury rate, it jumped from one point two to one point five. So this is the first time ever since I've been here that our yield is below our benchmark of six month. The reason is we already invested in those with the lower rate. It would take a while for us to go back up. But that doesn't mean that we're losing money. We're just that, um, the benchmark is much higher than, uh, to be realistic, um, to beat it. But looking at the investment report, I would say that this is a very good report. Okay, um, the allocation for, for the different investment we have, you can see that the cash is about sixteen percent. Investment pool, this is also one-day liquidity, is about twenty-four percent. And we have about eleven percent in CD certificates of deposits. And also our largest proportion is about, um, forty-nine percent is in agency. That is, uh, Fannie Mae, Fed Max, and those are the ones that we invest. Okay, looking at the maturity, uh, distribution, we have quite a lot in the, uh, one to thirty days. So we are very liquid. We have enough money to pay our bills. And then we also invest in, um, the others, like one to two years, two to three years. You can see that we have more in the one to two years than the two to three years. As we move on, um, month after month, then this will move up. So we will have more in the one to two years than the two to three years. Okay, looking at the treasury yield curve, this will give you, um, how much you would get, uh, the percentage of the treasury. So you can see that, uh, for the past year, you can see that the rate is going higher and higher. So, so that's why, um, we have more unrealized loss because we invest in a much earlier time. So the interest rate hasn't catch up yet. So this is the treasury curve. And then looking at the, uh, economy, we are looking at the, um, gross domestic product. And you can see that, um, the rate here is about three point two percent for the third quarter in two thousand and seventeen. They haven't come up with the fourth quarter yet. And also, uh, when you look at the, um, confidence level, the consumer confidence level, which is, um, at the end of last year, it, the level is about hundred and twenty-two point one. Anything is over a hundred, that means we are optimistic, so. All right, looking at Hottum City unemployment rate, um, we have a very low rate. Hottum City, uh, at the end of November is three point one percent compared to the national of four point one percent. So the region is doing very well, especially in the metro pracs here. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Fung. Are there any questions for Ms. Fung? Uh, Councilmember Fowler.
Ms. Fung, on that unrealized loss, can you go back to that first one? That's just on book value rights.
Right, uh-huh, it's not real.
Right, okay, just, just so some people, they look at it and didn't understand, okay.
Uh, first want to begin by, we approved, or y'all approved a, um, resolution about the two grants that we posted for the body armor and then the camera, we've been awarded both. The camera system's actually already been received and has been deployed at a couple of businesses, has been subjected to some burglaries. And then the bulletproof vest, for seventy-two officers are in the process of being ordered now. And this fourth quarter stats, it's also going to be the yearly comparison between two thousand and sixteen and two thousand and seventeen as well. Overall, fourth quarter calls for service, we were down ten percent compared to the previous quarter. And then slightly down from a year-to-year comparison. This is total calls for services, officers calling out in traffic and everything. Whereas the next slides are actually part-one offenses where reports were taking, taken. Um, we're up fifteen percent quarter-to-quarter, and six, six percent from year-to-year, just less than a hundred. There's no murders in either comparisons. Um, and then the rapes, I left this one different, if y'all looked at it, the numbers are little, they don't add up. The reason they don't add up, I was showing you that, that's a fluid number, um, when we do reporting, depending on where the case is during the investigation status, it depends on how it's reported to the state. So, we had fifteen reports that, that quarter. But the, the red lines or the graph to the right actually dictates what was reported to the state. Because through the investigation, you know, the detective either unfounded it as a, it wasn't a actual offense. And then these are actual numbers that were reported to the, the state, twenty-two percent. Again, these are unknown offenders, mainly family members, um, children, unfortunately, are the ones that are usually subjected to this. Robberies, these were up quarter-to-quarter, we talked about this the last one. Um, District Two, which is Carson and One Twenty-One area, um, six thousand one Midway and six thousand one Airport, um, the seven-eleven, and then, uh, you know what that one is, Valero? Valero, um, they got hit numerous times on both of those, which spiked those numbers for the quarter. And in course, a year-to-year from our first quarter, when we were getting hit in District Three and, uh, District Two, which is the Smiley's, and then the one, uh, down south off of Twenty-Eighth Street. And you see, after the first quarter, after the arrest was made, it drastically dropped. Aggravated assaults, again, these are mainly fights that get out of hand. Um, we had a spike in this due to the Dayton Square shooting, which was resulted in the numbers being spiked for the quarter. And then sixteen percent for, uh, year-to-year comparison, just ten offenses. Burglary building, down fifty-two percent from third quarter, fourth quarter, which actually is pretty impressive, since it was the Christmas season, usually burglaries tend to be a little higher during that time. And then sixteen percent year-to-year comparison. Burglary residence, we were up six percent, which is just two offenses compared to the quarters. And down six percent year-to-year. Theft offenses were up nineteen percent, and then down twenty-eight percent for the year-to-year comparison. BMVs were down seven percent during the quarters, but up twenty-seven percent year-to-year. Um, again, these are third and fourth quarter, we had an increase. And you can see in District Four, and District Two, District Four is mainly in the apartment complexes up north. Vehicle thefts, this category, since we started the reporting, we talked about in the previous council meetings, about the UCR and then the IBR reporting that the state's going to. In the fourth quarter, we started in October doing the IBR reporting. With IBR reporting, we now have to include U-U-M-V, which is unauthorized use of a motor vehicle, into this category. Whereas before, it was just actual theft of the motor vehicle. So, that caused a slight increase in the quarters, and then the year, seventy-two percent increase. Again, I talked to detectives and all that, there's really not a rhyme or reason to any type of the vehicles that are being, you know, stolen or the area. I mean, it's ranging from cars, to trucks, to motorcycles, and all over the city. The rest were up three percent quarter-to-quarter, and then two percent year-to-year.
Thank you, Chief Phillips, are there, are there any questions or comments from the council for, uh, Chief Phillips? Seeing an excellent presentation, thank you, sir. Moving right along to our announcements and events, now, our City Secretary, Art Camacho.
Thank you, Mayor. The announcement for January twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen, and the, uh, Carson Street Bridge is now under, uh, excuse me, Carson Street under State Highway One Twenty-One will remain closed for approximately eight months to a year. And frontage road information will be displayed on the variable message signboards. The thirty-second Annual Two Thousand and Eighteen Haltam Stampede Five K and One Mile is Saturday, February tenth, at the rec center and online registration. Through February second, and registration link and more details are also on the community projects page of the city website. Registration for spring sports leagues is happening now. Spring soccer for ages three to ten is going on until March the third. And adult men's and co-ed softball teams is open now. We want to give congratulations to Wayne's Boot and Shoe Repair at twenty-five, twenty-four Carson Street for winning the first quarter business of the quarter. And there's a listing on the, from the Keep Haltam City Beautiful and Beautification Board on the two thousand and seventeen Neighborhood Decorating Contest winners. There were eighteen winners out of, uh, three out of six different districts. And that, that'll be posted on the website. And a big thank you to everyone who decorated the house this holiday season. The judges were impressed with what they saw for the twenty-first year of the Neighborhood Decorating Contest. At the public library, teen programs, family movie night, adult GED and ESL classes, and other library activities are all listed on the library's website for the date and times. The AARP Tax Preparation Help is now going on, and you can register for an appointment by calling eight one seven two 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 seven seven eight seven. The days and times are Thursdays from twelve noon to four o'clock, starting February eighth, two thousand and eighteen. And we will now hear from Jack Bradshaw, the Director from the Northeast Terran Chamber, who will address the council and citizens regarding, uh, the recent chamber events. Jack?
Thank you, Art, and great to see everybody here tonight. Thank you for the opportunity to address you at your, at your council meeting, and it's just a real honor to be here. As you may know, the Chamber, the Northeast Terran Chamber has been operating and supporting economic development for sixty years now in Northeast Terran County, and we work with partner cities of Haltam City, North Richland Hills, Richland Hills, and Watauga, Watauga. We had a big member event last week where what we wanted to do, we were, we're at eight hundred and thirty members, we wanted to exceed a thousand members, and so we had this goal to reach a thousand members. So, we put together eleven community teams. One of those was a Haltam City team chaired by Rex Phelps. We had a North Richland Hills team, we had a Watauga team, Richland Hills. We had a, uh, Byers Barricades team, we had a Coca-Cola kind of North Fort Worth team. We had a healthcare team chaired by Xavier Villarreal from North Hills Hospital. We had an education team, and so we put this competition together with these eleven teams, and they were charged to go out and find captains for their teams. And then those captains would get five team members to bring the event. We had a great event, we, we brought a lot of people together, a lot of entertainment, a lot of food. But at, at its heart, it was really about bringing the community, community together, and having this great community event. Well, let me just say that Haltam City just completely rocked the event by far over all the other partner cities and all the other teams. They brought in forty-seven new members to our chamber. We got a hundred and seventy-one new members in three days, which is really almost unheard of. And then on the Friday after that, five or six more, and so, and, and they just keep coming in, two to three a day. So, it was a tremendous, successful event for us. And we like to do some different recognitions, and we had a post-event party, and we did some recognitions there. But I really wanted to be able to come to the meeting today to talk about, you know, what an incredible group the Haltam City group was, uh, just the way they came together, the enthusiasm, the pride. I just, I, I, I mean, it was just amazing, I felt that, I, I, I don't know, just, just more than I've ever felt before. And so, I was just very, very proud of the Haltam City team, and wanted to ask Rex to come up here. So, he, he was actually our event godfather, and that's kind of like the MVP. That's the person who really, uh, brought his team in and, and, and brought them together, and made sure they were there. And, uh, and really made sure that, uh, that they took the event seriously. So, as our godfather Rex, I'm here today, if you would just, uh, slip these on, please.
This is like art.
I just want to congratulate you, and if you would. No, no, put your hat back on.
It's too big.
If there's ever anything I can do. Just thank you very much. And thank you very much for letting me do this presentation tonight.
Just want to say thank you to, um, my captains, uh, and my teams. The truth is, is that I just got the right people in the right spot. It was people like Leila and Martha Strain and Nancy Doyle and Glenna Bachelor and Christie Prud, and just, I can't name them all, but they were just great team captains and great team members, and they're really the ones that did it, and I sure appreciate it very much. Thank you, all right, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Fantastic. Okay, moving right along to the consent agenda, the consented, actually, let me back up. Presentations, City Employee Longtime Service Award, our Fire Chief Perry Bonham.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council Manager. I have a distinct honor tonight to introduce, uh, a rock-solid individual. A lieutenant in our fire department, celebrating thirty years of service, loyal service. Uh, he's what the fire department stands for. A lieutenant, uh, who leads his guys, takes good care of them, good family man, his son is here with him tonight. Hopefully you can, you can bring him up, introduce him to LT. Uh, but no, seriously, uh, Greg, my first day, I walked in, you were there, and you kind of looked at me, and you said, "You sure you want to be here?" And I said, "Yeah," and you said, "Okay, keep up with me if you think you can." I'm still trying, keep up with you, brother. And, uh, what's amazing, before I turn the podium over to you, Greg, is that, um, I got to say a couple of things, uh, good stuff, good stuff. And the thirty years, you're not stopping at thirty years, you got three, four, five more years to go, and, uh, okay, at least that much, all right? So, uh, bring your son up, your son, introduce him, and, and might mention, all the guys are here to support you too. So, podium's all yours, thank you, Greg.
It's going to be short and sweet, this is my son Ethan, he's my youngest one. And then, uh, he's, he's expecting, uh, their, their first, first child, April first. And my wife, she's flying back from seeing her first one, who's seven months in Key West. Yeah, they're suffering down in Key West, down there. But, uh, I appreciate the guys coming, uh, supporting me. Uh, thirty years, uh, it's been good, I really enjoyed, uh, Haltam City has been good to me. And I'm blessed to be able to say thirty years in, in the fire service, uh, hopefully maybe thirty more. Uh, that was a joke. My wife's already wanting me to, uh, retire now, uh, so we can start, uh, seeing grandbabies, so, uh, it may be four more. Uh, that, that's my goal, but I appreciate it, uh, like I say, Haltam City's been good. It's been a good department, a good city, and I've seen many a chiefs. And, uh, Perry's a good one, and I got, I got a, a good group of, group of guys that support me. I'm done.
Fantastic, thank you for everything you've done for our community for the last thirty years. It's a long time. Moving right along to our consent agenda, that consists of agenda items number four, five, six, and seven. Council, uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Senate?
Yeah, Mayor, be, uh, before we, uh, go to this, I just want to bring your attention to item number five on the General Election Resolution Amendment. We had the name of Nathan Neblet, and we've come to find out, from the time I've submitted this, that he has been released from the Terran County, so we don't have an election administrator, we're just going to change the amendment just to put the title of election administrator and go with that. And that's under the advice of City Attorney, thank you.
So, with that change, again, this is, these are agenda items number four, five, six, and seven. We're in line for motion, uh, Councilmember, uh, Dr. Trong.
May I go ahead and make a move to approve item number four minutes, number five, zero election, number six, honors number O dot two zero one eight, that's zero one O, that's your one, and number seven, uh, agreement with the City of Denton with the special correction note from Mr. Art Camacho on item number five, may?
Thank you, sir. Uh, Councilmember Watkins, you said you had a question regarding the, the consent?
I had two, but Art took care of one of them, I had that cut out, that this guy didn't, was not there any longer. I'd had a question on, uh, item four, let's see, item four, page three. And I don't know whether, I'm just not reading this correctly, it's, uh, number one, said Richard Davis of Birdville Independent School District, declined to forego, I don't know what declined to forego, I don't know whether, he decided to forego, or... It's on top of page three. Uh, second, second.
Yeah, he declined to forego his comment, he didn't, he was on the list to speak?
Uh, he was on the list to speak, but when we, when we asked him, would he care to speak, he said, "No, I'll just forego my comments to the next set of speakers," and that's where Joe Tobert took over.
Okay, well, I mean, it, it seemed, seemed like he had, it was a double, a double negative or a double something, he declined, he decided to forego, or I just...
His comment time, he just didn't want to spend any time commenting, he was going to let the people have it.
Thank you, that's for a second then.
Okay, so you're seconding, okay, so we have a motion for approval of the, uh, consent agenda in a second. Council, if you would, please signify your votes. Motion passes, thank you. Moving right along to our regular agenda, agenda item number eight, fire truck purchase. Ms. Carver and Chief Bonham, welcome.
Mayor, Council. This is for a request for a fire engine pumper truck, uh, two thousand and eighteen, or, yes, two thousand and eighteen. Uh, recently, the department began to experience maintenance issues with several of their frontline apparatus, with multiple units being placed out of service at the same time. We also have agreements with neighboring cities to borrow an engine if the need arose. Uh, it's, in the two thousand and eighteen budget process, a decision was made to purchase a new truck in the fiscal year two thousand and nineteen budget. Uh, but since this approval of the two thousand and eighteen budget, additional maintenance problems have surfaced where an emergency purchase of an additional engine is necessary. Estimated cost is five hundred and four thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight dollars. And it's open to questions?
Uh, Chief Bonham, did you have anything you wanted to add, uh, to that?
No, Mayor, I'm here for support for Janet.
Okay.
I think she did a pretty good job.
Excellent presentation, fantastic. Okay, so, uh, Councilmember Fowler.
Thank you, Chief Bonham, do you have just a minute?
Yes, sir.
Um, I had the opportunity to ask some guys from different departments, and I, I think our guys probably, you, or as well as the, the, uh, committee, um, probably made a good decision, the Spartan and the Pierce, they felt like, you know, the other guys that I talked to said that they were, felt very confident with their ability, more so than probably the Rosenbauer from the service standpoint. So, I do appreciate y'all's efforts in that. Question though, on the E four seventy-one, is the intention, is our purpose to sell that? Or, I mean, I know that we talked about rolling it out of service, but would we not? If we can't get, but the numbers that y'all were talking about at the last meeting, the, well, just say five or ten thousand dollars or something, would we be, not be better off to retain that and park it, and just so, and just, you know, I'm trying to help y'all just so that we could maybe get it back up to a little bit, if it didn't require, you know, a lot of money, just to have, since it seems like we're having... If it didn't require, you know, a lot of money just to have, since it seems like we're having, you said we had multiple units go down recently. Would that be beneficial to y'all to do that?
Councilman, what we're gonna do is the engine 476 will be the one that'll go away, it's a ninety-three KME. It will go away, engine 471, we're going in reserve status.
Oh, in reserve, that's the one that's in reserve.
Yes sir, yes sir. There's some thought, councilman, I mean, you bring up a great point, there's some thought, some of the guys have brought it to me, saying, "Chief, what do you think about us possibly retaining that truck and maybe use it for a parade truck? You know, taking the tank, tank out, taking the hose bed out. And possibly be able to present to citizens of Halton City when we do our parades and stuff, possibly use it." Cause what I've been receiving in some of the estimates of, like I say, about five grand for that truck. So that's a discussion that I like to have with the manager and hopefully, you know, just get some good direction if it's something we wanna do. But the KME, the biggest problem with the KME, it is one truck that's always there. I mean, we have problems getting the heater working on it, different things like that, but it's always ready to go on service. You can hear the guy say, "Chief, you know, we hate to see it go away cause it always starts, it always goes, you know, it's an old one." And that's kinda where we are too, is, you know, replacement cost and maintenance of that older vehicle. But I hope, I really hope that answers your questions.
Well, it kinda does, but it does, I mean, see, you're not dead set on moving it completely out.
No sir, no sir.
My deal is, I mean, if we're not gonna give it five thousand dollars for it, it doesn't, in my opinion, it doesn't make sense to maybe, you know, get rid of, maybe to keep and especially until we get, you know, till we know that some of the others that are more aged, you know, we get closer to replacement on them, that may, you know, I just always think an older piece of equipment like that, you know, serves you better if you're, if you have that additional, you know, piece of capital equipment than selling, getting five thousand dollars. We're not gonna, you know, we're not gonna recognize five thousand dollars in the budget.
No sir, we really won't. And I mean, you bring up a great point, and it's a good truck, you know, obviously I was here when we put it in service, but it's a good truck. It still rolls, it still pumps, it still is always there for us, you know. So, and it's gonna take about four months to get this truck in and with our current status of our fleet, we run so many calls and the guys are so busy. And it's just starting to mount up the hours and stuff, even on our newer fleet. So that's gonna be our additional problem, councilman, too, as we move forwards with our fleet in general.
Now, do y'all, one other question, y'all, when you're doing community outreach with, say, the elementary schools and things like that, or the parades and the different things? Like, say, the elementary, when y'all are doing the fire safety programs, do we take a unit out to the schools at that time, the elementarys?
Yes sir, we do.
But do we have to staff it since if we have a call that we can?
We keep it in service. So if we have a call comes in and they take the call, so we try to keep the engines that are associated with that district to keep them where they can respond. So yes, they stay in service. So one good thing about if we had this unit and it wasn't reserve staff, or, I mean, we could call it a different status, but it could replace that, it could take that role. And we do our camps, our camps are well attended in the summertime, we can use it in that arena too. So there's a lot of different ways we could use that piece of equipment.
Well, and that's the thing, I mean, you know, that's, that would be something, I know that'd be up to the manager and you to make that decision, but I'm not opposed to, you know, us retaining that unit. And, you know, I just think it might be money better spent to retain it than it is to auction it off.
I agree.
Thank you, council member Fowler. Are there any other questions or comments from the council for Ms. Carver or Mr. Bonham? Chief Bonham, sorry. Seeing none, okay, we're now in line for a motion. Council member Grob.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we purchase a, purchase a fire engine pumper truck for the five hundred and, five hundred and four thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight dollars.
Thank you sir. Council member Thompson.
That would be for a second.
Okay, thank you, we have a motion for approval in a second. If you would, please signify your votes. Fantastic, motion passes unanimous, thank you. Moving right along to agenda item number nine, community development block grant projects. Mr. Van Newn used.
Good evening Mayor and city council. After I give my presentation, if you would, Mayor, would you open up a public hearing to hear any comments that people in the audience might have? Last council meeting in the work session, I presented to you some projects that we could apply for funding for the city's forty-fourth year community development block grant project. We get community development block grant funds on an every other year basis. It's from the Housing and Urban Development Federal Department and it's a declining fund presently. Two years ago, we were forecasted to get a hundred and forty thousand for the mini-street water main. We actually ended up getting a little over a hundred and fifty thousand. This year, we're forecasted to get somewhere between a hundred and twenty and a hundred and fifty. Tarrant County administers these funds for the HUD and they think we'll get at least a hundred and thirty in the forty-fourth year funding. The Public Works Department with the fire department looked at water mains in the city that couldn't support fire hydrants. Essentially, these were two-inch water mains, which really needed to be replaced so that the neighborhood could have fire protection. And then we looked at areas where they had had fires, so what we were trying to do is fund the greatest need. And two years ago, that greatest need was mini-street, which is by the Public Works facility. And currently, the greatest need is, now that that project is done, is Oak Knoll between Belknap and Parish with the extension of McNutt Street. Those are all two-inch water mains and they don't have any fire hydrants on them. I cost estimated those out, those come out to roughly four hundred and ninety-two thousand, that includes both engineering and construction. The county has asked that we submit a project that's under five hundred thousand, so I feel confident that that would be under five hundred thousand dollars. So having said that, that would be staff's proposal for the forty-fourth year CDBG project. I would ask that you conduct the public hearing and if everything goes favorably, that you approve the resolution that accompanies this cover sheet.
Thank you sir. Are there any questions or comments from the council before I open up the public hearing? Council member Grob.
Hey Greg, okay, you can educate me on this. So you're gonna go from a two-inch to a six-inch?
Correct.
How's that gonna affect the water pressure in that neighborhood? Or will it?
If, the two-inch is probably fairly corroded, so they should see better water pressure in the neighborhood.
Okay, I'm just curious, it's just bigger volume, so, thank you.
Thank you, council member Grob, are there any other questions or comments for Greg? Okay, seeing none, I'll now open up a public hearing at seven forty-five for anyone in the audience wishing to speak regarding this agenda item. Again, this is agenda item number nine. Okay, I'll close the public hearing at seven forty-six and we're now in line for a motion. Council member Fowler.
I'd like to move for approval of resolution number R dash two zero one eight dash zero zero three dash one one, CDBG funding for forty-fourth year.
Thank you, council member Fowler, council member Thompson.
That would be for a second.
Okay, thank you, and council member Grob?
Do it on the second.
Okay, we have a motion for approval in a second, council, if you would, please signify your votes. Motion passes unanimous, thank you Greg, thank you council. Moving right along to agenda item number ten, Fort Worth wastewater contract. Again, Mr. Van Newn used.
Good evening again. In this agenda item, I'll be asking y'all to approve a wholesale wastewater contract with the city of Fort Worth for our wastewater services for the next twenty years. This has been an item that has raised some concerns with staff. We have a pretty good feeling how council feels about this issue. The staff has worked with our city attorney's office and the city of Fort Worth to get the contract that's before you. Candidly, this contract is not the greatest contract in our favor. I think the city attorney said it best when this is a contract of adhesion. However, we were not the only city that felt in this manner. Last summer, the cities of Hurst, Watauga, North Richmond Hills, Richmond Hills, Keller, South Lake, and us, sent a letter to the city manager for the city of Fort, city of Fort Worth requesting a meeting to go over some of the items, all the items that were ever concerned in both this contract and the water contract. Basically, the outcome of that meeting was, they did make some concessions, however, they didn't actually change the contract. They've given us memorandums, they have verbally made some changes and it looks like we've gotten some of the things that we wanted. However, there were at least five issues that I still wanted to point out to you. And those issues were first, the street rental fee is three percent in the existing contract, it's five percent in the proposed contract and it can be escalated. However, for comparison purposes, I thought it'd be appropriate to compare it to what we're charging. And Halton City charges our enterprise fund six and a half percent. They also have a payment in lieu of taxes fee. This fee's exactly the same as what comes out of the water contract, which is, was approved in the 2011 timeframe. The next item was the new agreement requires customer cities to accept wastewater from adjacent areas. I didn't see this as that big of an issue because we're pretty much doing that now. The fourth item is the new agreement provides, with certain exceptions, that land for their metering and sampling stations be dedicated to the city of Fort Worth. This was an issue that we had and the other cities had as well, and Fort Worth has consented that they'll accept easements so that they have the right to be there. And they are doing that, so I don't see that being an issue. The fifth item was, the new agreement requires customer cities to bear the costs for certain items such as dispute resolutions and litigation. The difference between that and this contract and in the old contract was in the old contract, Fort Worth paid for their fees. In the new contract, that's considered a system cost and what that means is that all the customer cities share in that cost. Like I said earlier, about five or six of us customer cities met with the city of Fort Worth. I think we've gotten as much as we can get out of them. This is a twenty-year contract, I feel better than I did a year ago about this contract. I have looked into, you know, the feasibility of having a wastewater treatment plant. I don't see it being economically feasible. I don't see us being allowed to dump the effluent into streams that flow in the other cities. And in researching with North Richmond Hills, North Richmond Hills had also done their own determination and determined that it wasn't feasible to have a wastewater treatment plant. So having said that, I'm sure there's gonna be some questions, but it would be staff's recommendation that we enter into this wholesale wastewater agreement with the city of Fort Worth.
Thank you, Mr. Van Newn used, Dr. Trunk.
Hi Greg. When you say twenty-year agreement, that's mean every year the rate can be different, right?
Correct. The way the contract is set up though, city of Fort Worth has a wholesale wastewater committee. Halton City has two individuals on that committee. Jennifer Fung, our finance director, and myself are on that committee. And when it comes to rates for both the wastewater and the waterside, there's people selected from that committee and typically Halton City does send a representative. And we go through Fort Worth's books and we use the same methodology as the year before on what the new rates are, to be based on. So we do have input.
I mean, I take this opportunity to let the citizen in Halton know that we have no choice, is that correct?
That we want?
No choice, to control the price. Because most citizen call me, say, "Hey, why Halton City water is so expensive? Actually, the city have to put more money, pay for what customer out there, is that correct sir?"
Pretty much, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Trunk, council member Fowler.
Thank you for your work on this, Mr. Van Newn. He's, I'm gonna have to politely disagree, we're still potentially looking at, I think there's still the option there. I'd like to ask our legal staff, I'm not gonna, you know, I'm just not one to lay down for Fort Worth, so we have to on water right now, but I think we do have some options potentially in the future. Maybe not right now, but what's our opt-out on this, this twenty-year contract?
When you ask what our opt-out is, are you asking what it would take to terminate the contract?
Correct.
There is no termination provision.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm opposed to it unless there's a termination provision on our behalf, cause that's just me. I think that we, you know, I think that we have potentially, you know, the, and I understand, you know, I've had this discussion with the manager and feels like that the politics, you know, in the larger cities wouldn't allow us, but I think if you were to ever gain a consortium of some of these other cities, politicians change and, you know, so does policy. So I think it's just, but a matter of, at what point do these other cities get fed up of dealing with and we get fed up of dealing with Fort Worth dictating what we're gonna do from a financial standpoint on water and sewer? So we do have the capabilities to, you know, in the future, potentially trade our own sewer as well as some other communities. So I just would like to see there be an option placed in here before I can support it.
Thank you, council member Fowler, council member Grob.
Yeah, I just do not like the fact that we're gonna sign into a contract for twenty years and there's no way out. You know, I think, cause right now, I just look at this as extortion, because they're the only game in town and so we have to go with what they say. And so, you know, we have land that's geographically situated, close to where we could probably have a water treatment. You might not think it's feasible, but, you know, given five years from now, people getting fed up with what Fort Worth's doing? Time, you know, times change. And so, I'm not for anything that doesn't have us a way out. You know, give them a nice letter saying, "In thirty days, we're done." But I'm not, I can't support this, thank you.
Thank you, council member Grob. Mr. Olson, you wanna respond?
Yeah, I guess, and this is partially for Greg to comment on too, but you gotta look at your options here. It's not an option to tell Fort Worth thirty days and we're done, because you've got people who are flushing toilets and... No, but, okay, but we don't have any options right now as it is, you know, because there is no other game in town. Who, and so that's a problem. You know, if we don't have any option, if we don't have a way to pull out of this, then there's no incentive for us to fix our, you know, take care of ourselves. And so that's how I look at it. You know, let's say we get a water treatment facility and we go with Richmond Hills, North Richmond Hills, Watauga, and we get enough other cities involved, then maybe we do have an alternative to what Fort Worth is providing. And so, once we come to that decision, then it comes to say, "Hey, construction's gonna be a year, in a year, we're gonna be out." So, but we need a way out. Just some comments on this, obviously, the concern of the council's legitimate. We have been under contract with Fort Worth for several decades for them to treat wastewater, as have these other communities. But the reality is, the other communities, North Richmond Hills, Watauga, Keller, Richmond Hills, have all signed on for another twenty years with Fort Worth, so they have no outs either. They're not going to be doing a joint venture sewage treatment facility for the next twenty years because they are bound by contract to Fort Worth at the same time. So I think, just from a practical point of view, it is something, it's a long-term contract, it requires Fort Worth to invest lots of monies in anticipation of what, what facilities are going to be needed by all the communities that they're serving. I won't get into the, the politics of whether or not twenty years is, is the best time period for that. But from a practical point of view, I think Halton City needs to be realistic about what options it has. Because right now, we're at the point of, do we want Fort Worth to treat our sewage or do we not? And we've got to figure out a way for them to do that under terms that are different from this contract and right now, they've refused to do that.
I'll just add real quick, you recall the meeting that Greg and I went to and he's listed on here, the cities that showed up? I think, what's her, thirty-two, thirty-four wholesale water customers, Greg?
It's somewhere there, maybe just slightly under thirty, but somewhere right around.
So those were the only cities that really had enough concern to even ask for a meeting and show up. And I can tell you, after that meeting, I was hoping that, and I think I talked to Mr. Fowler about this, hoping that they would generate some support for that idea with the other city managers, but it didn't. If anything, it just put everything to bed in their mind. So like Wayne said, we were basically kinda left out on an island, they've all since signed the wastewater agreement, so that's kinda the boat that we're in right now.
It's my turn?
Oh, yes, sir.
I'm sorry. Um, well, I, and I still, I'm, I'm not gonna be the following the lemmings over the cliff myself. I, I still think, I don't, any negotiation, you don't, you know, especially a long-term situation like this, there, there's still, there still should be an opt-out option that's provided, whether it be a one, three-year, whatever. Uh, it's, it's typical in, you know, any, any long-term contract to have some type of, of out. I don't, you know, I, I still don't think that, that, uh, even if these other cities sign on to it and it's fine, um, we have the possibility, the potential to treat our own. Uh, so I, I just, you know, I don't think that we handcuff ourselves and completely eliminate that. I, I'm, and I'm, like I say, I'm just not gonna do that. I, I can't, uh, in good conscience. I can, I mean, I can understand signing on to a twenty-year agreement, but with an option that if there's at some point in there, um, with a certain amount of, of, uh, notice that we can, you know, that we have the ability to, 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 uh, pull out of an agreement. So.
This, I have a question. This may be for Wayne or Greg. What is our, what is the recourse if we, as a council, decide not to act on this extension? What is our recourse? I mean, they're not gonna stop, or are they gonna stop treating our, our wastewater?
You're, you're asking a difficult question. I, I seriously doubt they'll stop treating your wastewater. Um, they, they may hit you with severe penalties for continuing to use the service without having a contract. Uh, we, you know, we certainly, we'll find out if, if we don't sign this contract, but, um, it, it is, as, uh, Greg described, it's, it's, uh, right now, the only game in town. In a few years, it might not be, but, uh, I think the way this has been looked at, uh, we've known that this time was coming for a couple of years and Fort Worth has proposed this agreement. It's been, uh, almost two years since the date that they were proposing to renew this agreement and it's been vetted with all the cities and as you know, my firm represents a number of cities that are wholesale wastewater customers of Fort Worth and, and you're not alone. A lot of the, if not all of the cities that we represent, were very concerned about some of the provisions in the agreement and they've looked at them. They've had meetings with the, with the Fort Worth staff. Um, we've written, uh, letters regarding our legal concerns, uh, and taken positions on this and, um, I, I feel that Fort Worth and the customer cities have negotiated to the extent that we were able to negotiate any, any terms of the agreement. Um, I think the decision point is, you know, whether or not you have another option to avoid entering into this long-term contract because once you do, you are, you're on the hook for the next twenty years and, uh, you know, maybe that's longer than you wanna be on the hook for, but that's the option that's been given to you by the city of Fort Worth. And again, if, if, if you sat down with them, they'd have reasons why the contract needs to be for that term. Um, there's a lot of investment they're making. Uh, but at the same time, this is, uh, uh, an all-in contract for customer cities and you have to buy into their system and, and how they do their calculations and what their charges are going to be. Uh, there is a committee that gets to weigh in on, on issues from time to time, but, uh, overall, the contract is a legally binding document. And if Holtham City refused to abide by it, then what you'd be looking at is possibility of a lawsuit for breach of contract. You would have to deal with that at the time.
The reason I ask is because I, in this instance, I am in agreement with Councilmember Fowler on this. I mean, you know, twenty years is entirely too long. I mean, we're binding the hands of not just one or two generations of council members, but I mean, many generations of council members. I mean, and, you know, we're tying their hands. Who knows what our ta- property, or not a property, but what our water rates will be at that point? And who knows what new methods of treating, you know, these, this type of waste material will develop in the, in the twenty years, or who knows what our options will be in twenty years. But, you know, if we buy into this, pretty well stuck with it for the next two decades. Uh, Councilmember Watkins.
I'm also in agreement that, uh, I don't know what exactly I'd be looking for, but, excuse me, I don't, I don't, I wouldn't wanna be signing a contract. Of course, I'd be a hundred when this, when this twenty years is up, so I'm in a whole lot different position, but, uh, uh, I, I'm not too sure I've seen anything like this where they don't say, okay, well, if you wanna buy out in ten years, or you want, with, with, when there's no buyout and no, uh, provisions provided for a buyout, I don't, I don't like it either.
I mean, if we were going to build our own wastewater treatment facility, it would take us three to five years if we even chose to do that. I would suspect several years to get it up and running. So, I mean, I would think a five-year window would be plenty. You know, I mean, that's just my opinion, but, uh, Councilmember Fowler.
Mr. Van Newen Hughes, years and years ago, and it may be, I know it's before your time, but Holtham City treated its own water, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and we still have that facility. It's just, it's out, it's antiquated and outsized. I mean, for sure.
Well, the problem too is now with the requirements by the TCEQ that you have to have a certain amount of storage tanks on the ground. We don't have any of that.
Right.
And so.
But we did at one point treat our own water.
Uh, wastewater, yes. Yeah, we also use water wells as a supplement, our water side, but that was not economically feasible.
Right. And there's a, once you get outside these larger urban areas, a lot of the smaller towns throughout the state of Texas treat their own water, own their own wastewater. Is that?
Yes.
Okay. So, you know, once again, I understand there's difficulties and I understand that, you know, that we've said that the politicians, and we all know, I mean, we ain't sitting here, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna mince words. They're gonna protect Fort Worth and they're gonna protect the system, but in turn, those politicians won't always be sitting there. And things like this, when people get tired of it and get fed up with being held hostage, then they typically change politicians and when politicians change, policies change. So, um, I have, I have not a problem looking at maybe a three-year, you know, three-year option on and out that we provide. Um, but I'm still not gonna sign. I'm not gonna, as the mayor said, I'm not gonna handcuffs a, a future council, you know, and I'm not, I'm not gonna handcuff our staff. Um, you know, it's like anything, this stuff, at some point, there's always a crack in the, you know, there's always a crack in the glass and we may be the crack. But at some point, they're not, they're gonna have to understand that you, you know, you have to negotiate, you know, in a, in a realistic manner. And, and I don't think a twenty-year contract's a realistic manner with no option out.
Well, that, the question was asked to Fort Worth in the meeting, you know, why the twenty-year requirement. And the example they cited to us was they buy their water from TRWD and TRWD has to obtain their water. Um, and they specifically mentioned a one billion dollar project that TRWD has going on. So it's kinda like Mr. McClany was talking about. When you, when you issue debt for such a project, it's typically in twenty-year increments. So what they cited to us, it wasn't just like, it's twenty years, tough luck. They basically had information to follow that up with because what that does is it passes along infrastructure costs to Fort Worth and Fort Worth has to issue debt for twenty years. So it wasn't, it, it's kinda like what Wayne was saying. They, they had reasons when we met with them, um, why they had specific, a specific twenty-year clause in there and that was the reason that they gave us. Cause it's a, basically a pass-along cost. And you're talking about, you know, just on the TRWD side, you're talking about a billion dollar contract. So of course, TRWD wants to lock in all their water customers and it just trickles down to us like everything else.
Well, and I can understand it. I don't think that there's an option. I don't think that, well, there are a few options. I don't know that any of them are viable for water. You know, for water production for the, or water service for the city, but, uh, sanitary sewer, I just think that we have the, we have the, A, we have the land, B, we, we have the, you know, the location where it's worked before and it, and it potentially could work again. And I just, you know, I just don't, I don't have a problem signing the twenty-year agreement, but I'm, I'm not gonna sign and, and, you know, and, and to me, that's our responsibility as a board up here is to make sure that we, you know, not only do this, but we're forecasting what's gonna happen in the future. You know, and, and I don't think it's fair to us to just go in and say, well, you know, everybody else is doing it, so we'll jump into it too. I just, I'm not gonna do that. So.
Yeah, I would just recommend if we, if the council votes against renewing this, I would just, um, ask for some kind of consensus. If Greg and I go back to him and say, our council doesn't want any part of the twenty-year agreement, they would be, they would consider a X-year agreement if they're, if the council would come up with some consensus on what we could take back to him as a, as a proposal.
I, I have a problem with, with signing a twenty-year agreement, as long as there's a, like I say, a three-year option.
That's what I'm asking about.
Three-year opt-out that's a provision within the contract. I, I mean, I think that's our, you know, it's, it's not much of a negotiation whenever they hand you the contract, pretty much, and say, here it is, sign it.
That's exactly it. There is no, we have no leverage on our side. There's nothing for, on our side. They just say, here you go. Be happy and grin.
Well, and the thing is, they know that for the majority of their, of their buyers, the cities, they're, they have no option. They have a captive audience with them because they're already built out. Unlike us, we have the flexibility. We have the space available. We've done it before in the past and we, and we have the, the wherewithal and we have the determination to do something different. So, I mean, I, I'm in agreement with, you know, the Councilmember Fowler. I think, like you just said, a twenty-year agreement's fine. However, there has to be that buyout. Three years, five years. I would say no more than five years. But I would say no sooner than three years because that would take us at least that amount of time to get up and running if we were to, to build a new, uh, build a facility.
Well, and what I'm saying, Mayor, is that, you know, we might rock along here for seven years and, and be perfectly happy with the, with it. And then in, in seven years, a future council might come in and say, you know what, we'd like to exercise our option on a, on a wastewater facility and, you know, then you could provide a three-year notice and then in year ten or starting in year eleven, then we could provide our own sanitary sewer service.
Yeah, I agree. We gotta maintain that flexibility.
But that's all I'm saying. Not necessarily go, in three years, we're gonna do something different. No.
No, I wouldn't say we're gonna do it. I'm saying, what I'm saying is, if any, this council or a future council decided that they wanted to go in that direction, it would take them at least three years to get it engineered and to get it up and running. So I would say somewhere three to five years, somewhere in that, in that, that window. Councilmember, uh, Groh, did you have your light on a moment ago?
Um, no, I, I was just piggybacking off of the comment. Thank you.
Uh, are there any other questions or comments regarding this from, uh, Councilmember Brown?
Uh, Mr. Wayne, do you have any idea or what, what's gonna happen if you go to them and kind of re- rebuke their normal operating procedures? Can you give us any idea of what might happen here?
No. Well, I can tell you, and you may recall from, uh, we talked about this in a couple of budget workshops, because we were having budget workshops when Greg and I met with them and our, our expectations going into the meeting is that it would be exactly kinda like what Mr. Groh described, you know, tough luck, get out of here. It wasn't like that at all. Um, every, every question and concern that all the city managers and the public work directors have, they answered. Um, you know, it was, um, and I thought it was, you know, they had objective answers for all of it. I, we didn't even discuss consequences because I, I think, like I said afterwards, I met with the city managers that were at the meeting and they were all kinda like, all right, we, we understand now. We get it. We can, we can go to our councils and, and inform and, inform them and educate them. So I don't have any idea what'll happen.
Help me with my train of, my train of thought, line of thought on this, go along with them signing it, but always have it in the back of my, our mind that, uh, you know, like Mr. Groh said, who knows what treatment's gonna be in ten years? New technology, what's gonna come along? Uh, gosh, I just don't wanna get our hands slapped and be in a worse position, negotiating position. If we do this, but yes, I mean, I hate being in this position, but what my, my, my train of thought would be, go ahead and sign it, get it done. And if we come up with something, if some new procedure's brought in later on, we have one of the finest law firms in the state of Texas representing, said, we'll see you in court and opt out. Help me out. What was, what, what would that, I'm not wanting to go back on agreements, but just sign it, go on, and then if something did, some new procedure came along that we could take advantage of, of treating wastewater and then just say, uh, and just opt out and say, see, see you in court.
Well, the advice I've gotta give the council, and if you wanna go in the exec session, we can talk about this, uh, but the advice I've gotta give you is if you enter into a contract, you ought to intend to abide by the contract. So I understand the concerns that some council members have. Uh, I, I maybe am not in a position tonight to tell you what your options are if you don't sign this contract, but, uh, I think that, that Fort Worth, uh, has, has made you the offer that they're willing to accept and all their other customer cities, it's my understanding, have agreed to it. If Holtham City doesn't want to, I don't, I don't know what your options are at that point in time, but, uh, that's where we would be. We'd be uh, talking to Fort Worth about what happens next if, if you don't wanna sign this contract. They may be willing to negotiate, uh, a smaller term contract with you. I can almost guarantee it'll be at a higher price, probably a much higher price, but, uh, there, there may be other options, but as far as I know, nobody has yet to attempt to negotiate that with Fort Worth. Uh, they've looked at, at what the long-term requirements are for treatment of sewage and, uh, Fort Worth has come up with a proposal that they believe benefits them and the customer cities in the best way. If we disagree, then we'd need to decide where we wanna go with that. And I think, I think as, uh, the city manager has pointed out, uh, Fort Worth has given reasons why this contract may not be ideal, but it, it makes sense. Um, but if we disagree and we don't wanna execute it, then, um, we can go back to Fort Worth and say we wanna consider other options and see what kind of, uh, time period it'll give us to get out.
Mr. Brown, did I answer your question?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Groh.
So in this contract details, are there any things, uh, specific about, are there any caps on how high they could raise the rates on the sewage, the wastewater?
Certain fees, there's caps on, but on the actual rates, there's not a cap.
So theoretically, they can jump at ten percent?
Right, and knowing that that might be a concern to councils, I looked at what our rates have been over the last three years. And on the sewer side, for a thousand gallons, just on the volumes side, they've actually decreased every year, just slightly over the last, from FY twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen and the current rates.
Okay. And is there a certain amount of gallons that we have to pass through their system? Is there?
A minimum? No, there's not.
So, okay.
Uh, Councilmember Watkins and then Councilmember Thompson.
Well, I, I can, I can completely see how the city of Fort Worth or the city of anybody or anybody drawing up a contract has to know, uh, what they have to work with, what, how much money, uh, the funds they'll have to make improvements and, and do all that. I can understand that. By the same token, they should also know, uh, what would be the penalty. So I'm back to where I was and where everybody else is. I'm, 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 I'm okay with five years, but, but, uh, uh, I'd, I would say that seeing what they're talking about, I would still say that they should also, we should also say, well, then what's it gonna cost us to pull out in five years? There, there's, there's got to be some, I, I've just never seen anything like this with no option whatsoever. I mean, it could, it could cost you a jillion dollars. They're not saying anything and that's, and I, and I think we need to know that.
Thank you, Councilmember Watkins. Councilmember, uh, Thompson.
Yes. Uh, Greg, did I hear you say on, early on, that you had done a study of feasibility?
We've looked at what the costs would be and that, we looked at that a year and a half or so ago.
Few years ago, yeah.
Right. And from the consultants that deal with this, they didn't think we would have a chance even getting permitted through the TCEQ.
So that would be the major problem in all this, even if we could get the materials and set it up and get it working, that would be the real catch to it all.
Correct.
Correct?
It would be that and it would, um, you know, Greg alluded to it before, you know, every other city's signed a twenty-year contract with them, so trying to get a partnership from cities that don't have the ability to partner with us because they're locked into a contract with Fort Worth, we would basically be. We would basically be stuck with running it by ourselves, paying it for, by, by ourselves, cause there's. The other thing that the consultants told us is the, there's, there's no grant money for cities in metropolitan areas. To get for wastewater or water treatment. The grant money's not there. The grant money's pushed out to rural areas like. Council member Fowler was talking about that don't have access from a central location for water and wastewater, so. Those are some of the issues that they raised.
Well, one of my concerns would be, if we did not sign it, it would be the fees that our city would have to pay. And legal fees and any other additional fees if they jack the rates up on us. Uh, that would be a concern, how it would affect our bottom line that way, too. And it's something we don't know.
One of the thing is, you know, we could, assuming we can, you know, say, get a five year buyout or whatever, or opt out. We could, if the future councils chose to do this. Build one and then at the end of the twentieth year, start bringing on some other cities if they chose to do so, but. You know, I, I don't know, you know, that's for future negotiations, but I do, I do believe we need to maintain our flexibility on this. Uh, council member, uh, Fowler and then council member Grove.
Thank you, Ms. Rannan Hughes. You alluded to the fact that they, they haven't given you any idea. You did your own feasibility or your own. Analysis on that they've decreased a little bit over the past three years, but have they given you any idea of forecast out over twenty years? What it's gonna do?
We.
When y'all met.
They do, um. We did talk about that and they didn't, I thought they thought the rates would stay fairly flat for the first couple of years. They have a project coming on for, to feed the customer cities. I didn't.
There's a decrease in eighteen. There's actually a decrease in eighteen and then you'd see a increase starting in fiscal nineteen is what they told us.
Cause see, I look at this, it's exactly what Mr. McLean put up there earlier. We have to know where we're gonna be in twenty years. And I can't, I find it hard to believe that with the ability. That city of Fort Worth has in this, you know, the water system, that they can't project out what costs are gonna do to treat wastewater. That's, that's one point, so that, and they may not come all the way clean with us and tell us what's gonna happen, but they can at any point. Just like we said, they can at any point decide they wanna go up ten percent a year for, just like they've done with water. Which I can understand, water costs more to, to get here to us and to treat and to take care of than, than wastewater does. But at some point, then I have to look at, when we talked about in the future, the more development there is up north. All that North Ritson Hills, Keller, Halton City, or, uh, Watauga. Uh, all that area comes through that trunk line, does it not, that heads down the?
It all goes. There's a trunk line, uh, immediately south of the high school that runs to the east.
Right, okay. So, at some point, I have to, you know, not being an engineer, but I have to think that at some point. That the, the faster they can capture and treat it to the north. Is less that they have to treat and capture at Rolling Hills. Is that the, Rolling Hills, is that the one, or what's it called?
Village Creek.
Village Creek.
We dump into.
Okay, at some point, as we continue to get growth to the north, they're gonna have to capture some of it before it even gets to that. Or they're gonna overwhelm that facility. So, I, I, I mean, I'm not trying to outthink them, but I'm just trying to use common sense and it, it. It just makes sense for us to, you know, in my opinion, to look at those things. And maybe they might wanna consider partnering with us because they only have X amount of space to increase that facility.
Well, actually, what's happened, when we were talking about the twenty year time period, uh. In the meeting that we had between the staffs of the cities and city of Fort Worth. Because us cities have done such a good job at getting water conservation across to our residents. There's less water being used, which means less in the wastewater stream, which has allowed them to take projects. Some projects off the table and some projects delayed by five, ten years.
Which I can appreciate, but, but still, with the overwhelming growth, even though we are conserving water. I mean, look at the rooftops that are going up from here to, you know, stuff that was, that was, when I was a kid, we were dove hunting and rabbit hunting on. You, you know, you couldn't shoot a BB gun there now, so it's ju- you know, I just, I, I look at where. Things are going in the metroplex and I just, I, I just still, twenty, twenty years is too much for me and. I just don't understand how, if they're, if they're basing it on capital improvements, that they should have an amortization and they should have an idea. And be able to tell us, especially on wastewater, cause it's, it's more of a constant than the, than the water consumption and treatment is. Um, the wastewater se- would seem to be easier for, you know, to calculate, I would think, than, than water. Um, so I just, I just, you know, like I say, I, I'm just, have difficulties, you know, with. The way this thing was not necessarily on y'all's behalf, I know, I thought, but I just think that, you know, I just don't wanna, I don't wanna pull that option off the table.
Thank you, council member Fowler. Uh, council member Thompson.
Is this something that we would have to sign or have to vote on tonight? Could we wait and find out what their responses would be? I'm just asking.
It's a good question for our legal counsel.
Actually, probably not a good question for me. Uh, the, the timing on this, we are. Perhaps the last.
We are.
Customer city to approve this, if we do approve it. Uh, we're already coming up on a year behind the, the. End of our prior contract. Um, so we're, we're. We're delinquent right now in dealing with this. We've been trying to negotiate with them. We've had meetings and, and, um. It's time to, to make a decision on this, but, you know, having said that, if the council's not comfortable. And you want, you want us to go back to Fort Worth and talk to them and. See whether there's any options that, uh, we're not aware of right now. And then that's something that you can do. I don't know what their response is gonna be to that, because, um. They are, they are carrying us right now, even though our contract has expired.
Does that answer your question, Ms. Thompson? Okay, uh, council member Grove.
I know we've talked about this wastewater thing and talked about putting up, uh, a treatment plant here. So, I kinda find it, um, I don't know, um, that we're just. Now we're getting to the point where the contract and nobody's come and talked before this council about, hey, we're in negotiations with Fort Worth. What are you all thinking about? Because I know, you know, I hear it over and, you know, I see it in the different social media platforms. People, uh, yelling about the water, uh, cost of the water. And different, some of it's good, some of it's bad, or, you know, some of it's true issues and some of it is not true issues. But the citizens are concerned about it and this is really the only lever that we have. About, you know, putting up our own waste treatment facility, so I'm, I'm just. You know, I guess we're past the eleventh hour and, and now we're just now hearing about, hey, we're at the con- contract. And nobody's talked about, talked to us about, hey, we're in negotiations, what do you, what do you guys think? Here's what Fort Worth has pitched us, and it would've been nice to know maybe three or four months ago. And then, or a year ago, if we were already at the, at the end of the contract. So, I just think it's, you know. I don't know, piss poor planning and timing.
I, I don't understand what you're saying. We've.
Okay, well, alright. Did we not talk about it in the budget session about waste treatment plant? We had, you know, if we go back to Mr. Plisca, what, two years ago?
Two years ago.
Okay, we talked about it then, and so, you know, it's, it's in, not many people, this council's pretty much, other than Ms. Thompson. And Mr. Brown, this council's pretty much was there two years ago when we talked about it. And so now we're at this point. And we're at the, we gotta say yes or no, right, tonight, and nobody's come and talked to this council, it's like, hey, I know you guys are not happy about the water rates and the. Sewage water, and so why didn't, why hasn't staff? And said, hey, we're talking to Fort Worth and this is what they, this is what they gave all the other cities. What do you all think?
We've been talking to, about this since we, since the budget workshops for fiscal seventeen.
Okay, I know that, but.
Right.
This is the first time that we've had this con- talk about this contract.
No, sir. Um, in fact, when Greg and I went, we told you, I told you that I had a meeting with the city manager and we told you the cities that were left. That had issues with the contract.
Right.
That was in July is when we met with Fort Worth.
Okay, when was it, the twenty year agreement? When, when, this is the first time I've heard about the twenty year agreement with a no out.
It, that, that's the way it was the first time. It's always been a twenty year agreement.
Twenty years ago.
Yes, sir, but we told you, basically, the stipulations were the same as the nineteen eighty seven contract.
Okay, I didn't have the nineteen eighty seven contract.
Yes, sir. We, we provi- we've talked to you about that for the last two years, but.
You want me to go search my machine to see if I have a twenty year?
You can search away.
I don't have it. I know I don't have it.
So, I'm telling you, when we, when we went and met with Fort Worth in person. Th- this is one of the issues that the city managers from the, what is it, six, seven cities, Greg?
Right, yep.
That we had, and, and I told you, their explanation to the twenty year was that they have infrastructure costs.
And, and I'm fine with the twenty year, but if we decide, if, like, from five years from today, we say, hey, look. You know, they've already jacked it up ten percent a year, you know, let's say. And we just got tired of it and say, we have no way to go out. It's like, okay, they've jacked it up ten, ten percent for two years in a row. And let's look at opt- let's look at an alternative to Fort Worth for treating water. And we don't have an out for that.
Right, they don't, they, they will not, and they told us this at the meeting, they will not negotiate contracts with individual cities. They won't do it. And to, and to address your point, cause I've heard several times about ten percent increases in one year. Well, you have to remember, and what they reminded us at the meeting was, before they ever. Pass along a ten percent increase to the wholesale cities, remember, if you live in Halton City, you get your water cheaper than a resident of Fort Worth. You also pay less for treating your wastewater, cause we're wholesale customers. So, they would have to go to their council and say, okay, we're gonna raise our rates twelve percent. Before they ever tell Halton City, we're gonna raise your rates ten percent. So, politically. That's not, that's not doable for them. They have a council that they have to report to too, so every cost increase. That we get passed on has already gone through Fort Worth. So, what they do is they sent us, it's like we went four years, I believe, and we didn't follow the recommendations that they gave us, saying. Okay, you need to four percent this year, three percent this year, increase it by those, because that's what we're doing in Fort Worth. We didn't do that. We skipped those four years. We didn't have any pass along costs. So. You, you said it before, there's a lot of misinformation out there and part of that misinformation is Fort Worth is just gonna say, hey. You're gonna pay us twenty percent more next year, because before they can do that, they, they had to have already approved that through their council and they were telling us. They have a council that told them no more increases in water and wastewater. That was their council that they had it in July. So, they're fighting the same fight we fight politically. In trying to, to get our residents to understand, hey, these are pass along costs and this is the cost of having water and treating wastewater. So, you're right, there's a lot of misinformation, but they flat out told us they will not negotiate. Contracts with individual cities, the wholesale customers. They won't do it, because they're, they're negotiating thirty-four different contracts. So, you know, it's, it's, the, the information that we got in the meeting was good. Like I said, Greg and I both came out of it saying, okay. Every question and concern that the city managers asked and had, they answered. And then they explained, they went through the trouble of explaining.
Yeah.
Why the twenty years, the costs that they have to pass along, the fact that they have to get that approved through their council before it ever even comes to us. So, all that was explained in that meeting and I thought they explained it very well. But we talked about that in July. After Greg and I came out of the meeting, cause I had a different expectation going into the meeting than I did coming out of it.
Alright.
Uh, let's see here, council member Watkins and then council member Fowler.
Well, I hope we're not gonna sit here all night and discuss this. It. I don't know, uh, uh, and I don't know that anybody knows, there, there's, there's some kind of term for this, uh. Uh, council member Grove called it extortion. I'd say at the, at the very least, it's like a monopoly or an antitrust. Or there's something wrong with the picture, that they can say, this is what we're gonna do. And you haven't got any option at all, ever. That is, that is. It's not morally good to start, I mean, there's something wrong with that picture, and I don't know. Uh, the first thing about what to do about it, but I, what, is this similar to a monopoly or a, a, a. Antitrust thing, some, some kind of way where somebody tells you, you're gonna do this, or we're gonna cut your water off, or we're not gonna pick up your sewage, or is there? There's something wrong with that. That was a question.
There's a question. But you cer- you certainly have other options. I don't know how viable they are, but, uh, there's, there's nothing to.
What term would you use, not them, but something similar to this?
Well, I, I think you're talking about it in terms of a monopoly, the only game in town here. And, and that, that's probably true and if you word it in the context, it's the only practical game in town. There are other options that cities have, and as Greg pointed out and, and the city manager pointed out, the other cities have looked at. Options too and decided that, uh, this is the best option right now. You may disagree with that. And I, I don't get involved in, in the practical determination of whether or not it makes sense for you to go in a different direction, but. You know, my advice to you, as your lawyer, is that, uh, you know, we are at the point now where. Uh, we've got contract terms that are, are in front of you and, uh, it, it really is a decision of. Uh, do you want to sign this contract or do you not? And if you say no, then we can see what happens from there. I have a feeling it's gonna be very expensive to Halton City if you say no to this, but, um, you know, that's. That's certainly something we can explore if, if you want to. Um, I, I understand the frustration. But, uh, I, I think this has been vetted by a number of the customer cities, uh, and I know that we have weighed in on it. A lot of the lawyers from my office have, have given, uh, you know, their perspective and have, um. Attempted to negotiate with Fort Worth on, on a lot of the terms. But, you know, the bottom line is, this is what Fort Worth is willing to off- offer and, uh, if we don't wanna take it, then we can look at. What that means, but, uh, you know, right now, I, I don't know that Fort Worth. Has any inclination to say, yeah, we'll give you a, a two year contract or a five year contract. It's a twenty year contract.
Well, I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying, I, so far, I don't think anybody up here is saying that they're not willing to. Sign a twenty year contract. Uh, what, what they, everyone seems to be saying is one. Form or another of, uh, I mean, what you have here is two wolves and lamb trying to decide what they're gonna have for supper. This, this is a. This is not, this is not the way you, I don't operate well under those circumstances.
Let, let me throw.
As an elected official, I probably have to, but out, out in the street, I wouldn't go for somebody to come up and tell me that this is what you're gonna do or else, I mean. I'd go the wrong direction every time.
And, and I, I can appreciate that, but, yeah, let me throw out to Keith and Greg. I'm, I'm hearing tonight that the council's not comfortable voting on this and, uh, you know, I. I, I know that we're the last customer city to say yes to this, but I, I think maybe we oughta. Kick this down the road for another two weeks. Let me look at the contract, let me see what options there might be. Perhaps we. Make the phone call to Fort Worth and, and at least, uh, explore. Whether or not they've got any response to us, uh, wanting some special terms in this contract, which they've already told everybody, no. These are the terms that we've negotiated, but, um, I, I, I see the council uncomfortable tonight. Voting on this and I'm glad to look at the contract in more details and come back and give you advice on what I think you can do in the event. You sign this contract and then other options come up in the future. I'll, I'll be glad to. Give you more specific advice on how I interpret the terms of the contract in that regard.
Let's see here, council member, uh, Fowler, then council member, uh, Brown.
Uh, I'm prepared to vote on it, but, but, but it would be with the, with the caveat that we send. And I don't know that we necessarily have to send, completely send staff back without some representation from, from us. Who, who, who's on the fourth? We keep throwing up, I mean, and so, logistically, who's on the board that y'all talk to? Is it, is it just staff?
On the wastewater advisory board, yes. It's, every city has a primary member and a backup. And it's staff members from every city. There's no council.
Who from Fort Worth, though, says that?
Fort Worth sends quite a few people from their water department.
Okay.
So.
And it, but that's approved, but, and, and follow me, and I'm not trying to put you on the spot, Ms. Rannan Hughes, cause I, you know, I have a great deal of respect for you, but. It's kinda like. it's kinda like, well, here's, we're gonna negotiate, but here's the document, you're gonna sign it, okay? Who determines that they will or will not accept a three or five-year clause in that?
So.
Does that go back to their city council, or does it go to a water advisory board?
The way this process started, Fort Worth said, hey, they met with each individual customer city, as I understand. I know they met with North Richardson Hills, they met with us, so I'm assuming they met with every city. And they said, look, we would like to be able to have these changes to the existing contract. How do you feel about them? Say there was twenty changes. You know, ten probably didn't matter, five we were against, and five we were strongly opposed to. You know, the pilot fees and the uh, uh, street rental fee. However, we had them in the water contract, so it was kinda hard to argue against them. So, we started out on the staff level, with their staff, and the staffs from all the wholesale customers. And Fort Worth moved on some, and some they didn't, and they ended up with the eventual contract that I'm proposing to you tonight.
But it has to be approved by someone. So, is it approved by the water?
I'm assuming it was approved by, I don't know that it has been approved by their city council, because they haven't signed this. They're waiting on us to sign it, and then they'll take it to their city council. So, I don't know that if you're asking on what level in Fort Worth, it's been reviewed and approved, I don't think it's gone up to the council level yet. I think it's still at their staff level.
Well, you know, I mean, I I would have to think that that through protocol, it would have to, since it's an appropriation on one way or another, it would have to at some point reach the level of their city council.
I would, I see what you're saying, since the framework of the contract sets certain fees, certain
Correct.
Uh, well, the crux of the contract, yeah, I gotta imagine, something that large, they've, their city manager probably had direction.
Okay. Then I would recom- well, like I say, I can do it in motion or whatever, but I would recommend that either a group of us sit down with Mayor Price and and him and say, look, here's the deal. We don't mind signing your twenty-year contract, but we feel like it's within our reason, and we feel like it's reasonable. Would you like to be put in the same position we're put in? And see, you know, maybe maybe it's reached that level, and I'm not trying to take it out of y'all's hands, but just like I said, politicians and policies ebb and flow, and they change, and it's a whole lot harder to say, we're not gonna negotiate, you know, and we're not gonna allow a city, I mean, I would think that they would, as as another elected official, respect the fact that, you know, we have some concerns when you're asked to sign a twenty-year agreement, that you have no no, you know.
So to speak, they sit in the same shoes you do.
Right. So, how is that, you know, and and when you ask them, how is that a negotiation? You know, that's not really a negotiation. So, maybe that's the, maybe that's the point we're at, you know, I don't know, but I'm trying, maybe being a little unconventional, but you know, I just, I just think that there's, you know, it reaches a certain level and and um, when it comes across in a packet, I'm sure the the contracts and all come in and on the city force consent agenda, they sign it, Mayor Price goes in there and signs it, and it goes down the road. And then our citizens are affected with it for the next twenty years. And I'm not saying that they're gonna go, they're not gonna be unrealistic and raise ten percent, but they can. That's the thing. They have that option. And it's just like we've had with the water. Since I've been on the city council, we've had eight percent, nine percent, nine percent about increases over the last three budgets, is somewhere in that neighborhood. So, you know, I just, I I hate, you know, and I don't, I don't mind necessarily a three or a five year, but you you're not negotiating in good faith when you just hand somebody a document and say, everybody's doing the same thing. That's, to me, that's not a negotiation on their behalf, not ours, but on theirs. And I appreciate what y'all are trying to do, and I understand how difficult it is, but sometimes, like I've expressed with the city manager, sometimes maybe that gets to the point where one political body to another political body, and that's might need to get involved to.
I just don't like putting you in that position.
You don't, it doesn't bother me, I'm, but that's, that's fine.
Maybe we put that in a form of a motion, and then send it back to them, and then let them go back, and if it doesn't work, then we set up a meeting between their body and ours.
Well, and and it and any, you know, like you say, when it may end up being a, you know, it may be a deal to where once you send it back and say, well, here's the deal, you're a water board, you're a, you know, you're staff level, and you're saying, we're not gonna negotiate, well, that's fine, but our city council has the intentions of coming over here and meeting with your city council, if they're the ultimate decision maker. And maybe that, maybe that little bit of leverage would give us an opportunity to do something different. And and it may not, but, you know, um, I just know that, you know, we have some, we have some opportunities or capabilities that we may may exercise in the future, and we may not. But I just don't think it's fair to, I don't think it's fair to us, and I don't think it's fair for us as as a body to not have the the ability to exercise any of that in the future.
Thank you, Councilmember Fowler. Uh, Councilmember Brown, Trong, and then Mr. Gro.
This will be my last comment, but let's, let us not forget also, on top of all these increases, the impact fees increases that they've also passed along to us. Something like, what, over the next five years, what's the im- the wastewater impact fee going up?
I I don't have those rates with me. I just know on those fees, it, as the city manager had indicated earlier, they're the same rates that they charge to their own citizens.
Uh, Dr. Trong, and then Councilmember Gro.
Uh, this is my last two. Uh, I should want to uh, correct that, the this deal already discussed before last year. And I was the one, anytime you bring up the bottle of water, I against that. But finally, I have learned that we have no choice. Right now, we are the only city hold out and did not want to sign contract. I am afraid we don't do so. Then they say, go ahead, you don't need to sign contract, and they will raise the price like we uh, can afford, and that will, the citizen will get mad with us. I mean, I I agree on a few, you know, twenty years too long. I hate water from Fort Worth. We have to pay so high. But I think this moment, I don't think we have choice. The reason I didn't fight more than before, because my goal is how w- we need to build city hall and police station, that's why the water is my secondary, you know, uh, thing in my uh, mind, and that's my opinion, a comment. Yeah, thank you.
Well, you know, Dr. Trong, to that as well, to that point, just like Councilmember Fowler said, you know, wi- wi- with us, we have to be able to budget, you know, forecast our budget long-term as well, and we we can't accurately do that if we don't know what our water rates are gonna be. So, we have to be very careful how, the length of time we enter to, enter into a contract with with anyone, because we can't have, we can't buy in the hands of future councils and our citizens as well, because, you know, we're twelve point four square miles, and we're responsible for everyone who lives here. You know, and it's important that, you know, we re- we represent everyone who lives here. And we gotta do that to the best of our ability, and I think entering into a one-sided, long-term contract isn't providing good representation.
Yes, because if we are able to build a water treatment, wastewater treatment, I would be hundred percent for that. I hate Fort Worth about the water, not me.
Yeah.
Uh, Councilmember, Councilmember Gro.
In in these negotiations with Fort Worth, what were the things that the member cities or this other cities put into this contract? What did, what did we contribute to it? Or was it all Fort Worth saying, here's the document, or here are the, here are the twenty things that we wanted add to the document?
I don't have.
And what are your, what are your emotions about it?
I don't have those red lines with me, I'm sorry.
No, but do we, do we contribute anything to it, saying, hey, you can only raise the the rate five percent a year?
In fact, we did. I had, I'm sure Wayne's office looked at uh, the contract, not just from Halton City's point of view, but some of the other, Big River Oaks was another city, and they were able to make some, some changes, but the changes that I highlight in my cover sheet are the ones that were the most, like when I said, there was five that were.
That Fort Worth said, but I'm talking about, because my understanding of a negotiation is a two-way conversation.
Right.
One party has some things, and another party ha- wants to get things, and then you guys come, some, hopefully come into the middle, and some, you know, everybody feels good about it. And so, I'm just trying to figure out what were the things that the cities, the wholesale cities contributed to this document? So.
Well, we, we can get you the several page of comments that we sent to Fort Worth regarding the document, if you wanna look at those.
Well, I'm just curious, because right now I have in in my mind, it's like they just, here you go, enjoy, and sign. And so, to me, that's not a negotiation. You know, the fact that they came up with twenty items and said, okay, what's your emotional, how how do you emotionally feel about these twenty items? That that's still, to me, that's a one-sided conversation. Here are the twenty things that we're gonna bend you over for, and like it. And and so, I wanna know what we were gonna go, you know, what was our response, or what are the things that we want to get out of this, so we feel warm and fuzzy? So, I'm I'm just curious, because I know the thing that we want right now is a way to get out of it, you know, uh, an out clause. I'm fine with it.
And and, yeah, and and I think the bottom line that came out of the meeting, like I said before, and.
Okay, but that, okay, that's the meeting that you had with the city manager. I'm talking about what was the the discussion about, were you there for the negotiation of this contract?
That's what we were attempting to do, is we were trying to have them answer questions over the concerns of the city managers that were left in the process had. So, basically, when we go in there and say, okay, why do you have a locked-in twenty-year agreement? How come, how come we can't get out of it? So, they gave us explanations, as I said before, about it. And their bottom line is basically that they're not gonna, as I said before, they're not gonna negotiate the contract with all of their wholesale customers. They're not gonna negotiate a contract for each city.
But each city has different, different needs. You know, Halton City's basically built out. We're about to, you know, Barnes, the Barnes property is about to, it's already rolling, like, they're already tearing up dirt. We're about to have two hundred and forty houses and about a thousand apartment complex, or a thousand units. And then, we're pretty much done, unless people start tearing things down and, you know, putting McMansions up, or whatever. And so, we're kinda built out, but North Richardson Hills has a completely different need. Hurst, I would say, is close to what we are. They're built out. Fort Worth is ever-expanding, so they have a completely different need. Halton City's different, you know, I don't think we're gonna be adding anymore. We're gonna top out at about fifty thousand people, which is about, you know, give or take. It's six thousand, depending on which number you look at. So, we have the potential of six thousand more residents in this city. And so, we're tapped out. And so, I don't understand why they can negotiate. We're not gonna do a blanket statement that we're not doing an individual negotiation, because each city has a different requirement. Richmond Hills is tapped out. You know, they're like us.
But the, but I think the bottom line is, basically what they're, what they're doing is they're charging you for how much water you use, and they're charging you for how much they treat.
Yeah.
So, but I think you're kinda proving their point, is to saying, there's, I can't even imagine how long it would take Fort Worth to negotiate with thirty-two or thirty-four different cities. I I, as a council, I don't think you would want us to do that. It's it's, it's, when when the bottom line is, you're just saying, okay, if Halton City uses this much water, this is how much it's gonna cost. If you, if we treat this much wastewater, that's what it's gonna cost. I think they're, I think it's it's to reduce it to that simple of a formula
Yep.
is, you can, you can place it across the board, because not, not everybody is a, not all wholesale customers are water and wastewater.
Right.
So, I'm just do water. So, it's.
And and I would be fine if we can get to that point. So, if going to that, not going to that, is if we, let's say we have ten years, it's like, they raise it, they they jack it up because of something, who knows? So, if we decide to build at our own waste treatment facility, at that point, we get it done in five years, so we got five left on the contract. So then, if we turn the tap off, and we're not metered anymore, we we'd be in violation of the contract.
There is no minimum flow requirement under the contract. There are fees you are going to pay regardless.
Okay, so what are those fees?
The pilot fee, for example.
And the franchise fee.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, see, that exactly what I'm, extortion. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, thank you, Greg, as well. So, we are in line for a motion. Councilmember, Councilmember Fowler.
Mayor, I'd like to ask, we ask staff and legal counsel to make uh, one last effort uh, with the express consent that we are willing to accept the twenty-year contract agreement with uh, one addendum that would re- that would allow for either a three or three to five-year uh, I'd let leave that up to staff to negotiate, um, uh, before we signed on the contract, and see if that that potentially could solve the problem.
Okay. We have a motion. Did everybody get that? Okay, we're in line for a second. Uh, Councilmember Brown.
That's for a second.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second? Uh, is there no other questions or comments? Dr. Trong.
Do they, do we have deadline on this one, or is still open? The deadline outside the contract here.
I can't tell you how Fort Worth is gonna respond, however, I think if we're moving, I think they'll take that as a positive signal. I I don't think they're gonna penalize us if we're trying to set up a meeting with their staff, and there's mayor with our mayor and appropriate council members. I don't think that when they see that meeting's imminent, I don't think they're gonna turn around and and stick it to us, for lack of a better term.
Thank you.
And the optics on that wouldn't look good either. Okay, if you would, please signify your votes. Okay, motion passes unanimous. Thank you, council. Moving right along, Agenda Item Number Eleven, City Code of Ordinances. All in first reading, Ms. Bachelor. There's a whole list of them. Nine of them.
Evening, Mayor and Council. This is consideration in our action to approve the adoption of the twenty fifteen I codes and twenty seventeen NEC National Electrical Code. The city is presently under the twenty twelve International Code Council Series and the twenty eleven National Electrical Code. A comparison table with the codes enforced in other Tarrant County cities is within your council packet. Benefits to the city for adopting the new codes include maintaining a grade for Insurance Services Office Incorporated to keep the city eligible for federal disaster relief, lowering insurance premiums, and embracing new technologies and life safety measures. Financial impact is none. Uh, staff recommends adoption of the twenty fifteen I codes and twenty seventeen National Electrical Code. Um, available for any questions. Uh, my building official is out sick today, but the fire marshal is here, if you have any questions on the fire code.
Thank you, Ms. Bachelor. Uh, are there any questions or comments from the city council for Ms. Bachelor? Excellent presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
We are in line for a motion. Uh, Dr. Trong.
Mayor, we have to read all the onens, or just add item number eleven, or?
Wayne, what would you prefer?
You can make a motion to adopt um, all of the international codes set forth in
Okay.
Agenda item.
Uh, Mayor, council, I want to make a move to approve the item number one international code in uh, you know, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
Okay, so Agenda Item Number Eleven.
Yeah.
Can see all the items can listed under Agenda Item Number Eleven.
All ten item list on the item.
On the first reading?
Yeah, item number eleven.
Okay, on the first reading, okay. So, we have a motion for approval of Agenda Item Number Eleven, all the ordinances listed under that item number on the first reading. Uh, Councilmember, none.
Thank you, that's for a second.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, Councilmember Thompson, second, okay. So, if there's no other questions or comments or discussion, we are in line. If you would, please signify your votes. Okay, motion passes unanimously. Okay, motion passes unanimous. Thank you. Moving right along to Agenda Item Number Twelve, Final Plats. Again, Ms. Bachelor.
Thank you. This is the application of Chad Alvarez for approval of a final plaque creating Willbarger Commercial Complex, lots one and two of Block A, being all of an eleven-point-two-five-four acre tract of land out of the John Acres Survey, Abstract Twenty-four, as described as tracks one, two, three, four, and five, indeed with two Willbarger Street LP, and recorded in instrument number D-two-one-seven-one-six-three-nine-seven-two, located in the M-one Industrial District, containing, uh, locally known as fifty-nine-twenty, fifty-nine-forty, and fifty-nine-sixty Lower Bourbon Road and nineteen-oh-one Carson. The applicant proposes to create two commercial lots, one for new office warehousing and one for storage. Lot one, Block A, on the plat will be dedicated to three new office warehouses, and Lot two, Block A, will be dedicated to overflow outdoor storage for rental one with an office building. Again, the property is owned M-one. Lower Bourbon Road and Carson are existing perimeter streets of the Willbarger Commercial Complex. This is on the southeast, uh, southwest corner. There is additional right-of-way being, uh, added to Lower Bourbon and Carson. Fire Station Two on Midway provides protection to the site. There is water and sanitary sewer services available. Parkland dedication is not required since this is not residential. The rough proportionality determination, um, fee of sixty-eight thousand eight-hundred-and-eighteen will be due before plat filing. The legal notice regarding the public hearing was published in the December twenty-second, twenty-seventeen Fort Worth Star Telegram. And if we look at the screen, this is the property again on the southwest corner of Lower Bourbon and Carson. Uh, for some of us that have been around a while, this is the old Andrews Tower property. So, it's these, uh, that are outlined in yellow that are being replatted. These are the three commercial buildings that are go, uh, north and south on the first lot. And then, here's this, uh, small lot for storage of rental one, which is to the west of this property. Here's the little office building. This is a big detention area, um, per engineering that's required for the property. So, pretty much the storage is gonna be contained to this western portion of the lot. And Mr. Alvarez is here for any questions, as well as, uh, myself and staff.
Thank you, Ms. Bachelor. Are there any questions or comments in the city council for, uh, Ms. Bachelor? Dr. Tong.
Ms. Bachelor, is this area for, especially for heavy industry or?
Yes, rental one does, um, leasing and renting of equipment. They're down the street on the Frontage Road to the west of here, so this is overflow storage for their, uh, business.
Okay. And, uh, particularly the owner asked to build a office warehouse, right?
Yes, this will be for rental income. These will be, um, lease spaces, uh, much like what we have on Broadway next to the police station or up on the Huddleston, um, where there are single doors and bays for individ, like, uh, contractor use, things of that nature.
What kind of business is, in, uh, what kind of business the owner intend to do in this office warehouse?
That would be a question for the applicant.
Yeah. Would you please? Yes, sir. Uh, I think.
Yeah, if you would, please just state your name for the record.
My name is Chad Alvarez.
Okay, seems like you have a big project here and, uh, may I ask you what kind of business you intend to do here?
So, um, the southern lot.
Yes.
Again, that will be, we own rental one, the Equipment Rental Company, which is to the west side of the Andrews property.
You, you, you mean this business already exists, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, sir, it does. And so, the southern lot will be overflow and house a few employees and things like that that, that control inventory and all that. So, that'd be the southern lot. The northern lot has the three buildings on it. That'll be multi-tenant. Um, who those tenants are, I don't know at this point. Um, I mean, they could be, you know, plumbers, electricians. I mean, it could be.
Our sales.
Car enthusiasts that, you know, just wants to park a car there and, and work on it on the weekends or things, so, um, anyway, so that's.
Thank you. That's my question.
Thank you, Dr. Tong and Mr. Alvarez. Are there any other questions or comments from the council for Ms. Bachelor or Mr. Alvarez? Seeing none. Excellent presentation. Thank you. Uh, I will now open a public hearing at nine oh five for any one of the audience wishing to speak regarding this agenda item. Again, this is Agenda Item Number, you, I'm sorry, Number Twelve, Agenda Item Number Twelve. Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing at nine oh six. And council, we are now in line for a motion. Uh, Dr. Tong.
May I go ahead to make a move to approve the final plat, P dash zero-one, zero-one-one dash seventeen, locate at the fifty-nine-twenty, fifty-nine-forty, and fifty-nine-sixty Lower Bourbon Road and nineteen-oh-one Carson Street.
Thank you, sir. We have a motion for approval. Is there a second? Councilmember Watkins?
Second.
Okay, motion for approval and a second. If you would please signify your votes. Motion passes unanimous. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Alvarez. Moving right along to Agenda Item Number Thirteen, ordinance number O-dash-two-oh-one-seven-dash-oh-two-one-dash-one-five, being Z-dash-double-oh-seven-dash-one-seven. Uh, go ahead with your presentation, Glenn. Uh, Glenn, I have a question regarding this, but go ahead with your presentation.
Okay, I'll make it as short as possible. This is a reconsider action on the application of Hudson's Mobile Glass Service for a zoning change request from C-three Commercial to C-four Commercial located on Lot Four, West Fifty-four Feet Three Inches, Block Three of the Earl's Edition, being approximately zero-point-three-nine-two-eight acres located north of Twenty-Eighth Street and east of Harris, locally known as forty-eight-oh-three Northeast Twenty-Eighth Street. Um, in your packet on the cover sheet was the background history of how we, um, arrived at this. At last council, it was determined to put it back on the agenda. So, um, Mr. Hudson is here. If you have any questions of him, I can go back over the presentation if you want. I'm just not sure what, what are you needing from me tonight.
Well, the question I have is, it was my understanding this was gonna be sent back to the, uh, was it the PNZ or ZBA, one of those?
It would be PNZ.
Yeah, the PNZ was supposed to have been sent back there. I mean, do we need a formal action from the council to send it back there?
That would be Wayne's, Legal's question.
Because that was my understanding where it was headed to.
Yeah, that's correct. Uh, what we had on the last agenda was the consensus of the council to put this on tonight's agenda for reconsideration. So, it's, it's probably a two-step process tonight. The first would be to, if the council's in favor of moving forward with this, to deny the application without prejudice and to make a motion to send it back to PNZ for, if I understand it, for consideration of a, a planned development zoning on the property or whatever other direction you wanna send it into the PNZ. But tonight would be the night for you to give direction to the PNZ on what you're wanting them to do so that when this case comes back to you for final approval, it will be in whatever format you're expecting it to be in.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, Councilmember Fowler.
So, Mr. Olson, am I correct in understanding that you, uh, saying what the council, what we would recommend for the PNZ to consider? Is that what you're?
Yeah, uh, I mean, remember, this has already been to the PNZ once.
Right.
And then, it came to the council and got turned down by the council. And now, uh, since the council did not deny the, uh, the case without prejudice, there's a one-year waiting period on it being reconsidered by the PNZ. So, if the council's now in favor of, of denying the case without prejudice and sending it back to PNZ for reconsideration, I think it'd be prudent for you to give some direction to the PNZ on what you're looking for them to consider and make a recommendation on.
And that was my understanding. Um, for clarification, then, I would like to see that, uh, it be considered and, but considered without, not, without prejudice, but, I mean, I'm not making a motion unless you want me to, but, um, I'm just making, I'm making suggestions that, uh, there be no outside storage whatsoever, period. Uh, parking, we address the parking issues that relieve parking from Belknap Street and direct it towards Harris.
Twenty-eighth Street.
As I think somewhat the plan did.
Twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth, I'm sorry. Uh, that, you know, meet the landscaping requirements and that it not, uh, that, to make sure that there is, uh, not the potential of another facility locating, which I think that's been addressed by Mr. Hudson at the last meeting. But to make sure that there's not, uh, we don't vacate one building, move, move to another, and then there's, you know, then there's another same type occupant move into the existing facility. And whatever we know we need to do to address that. Those are the concerns that I had. Um, I'm in support of it. I just, you know, there's, those are some of the issues that I'll be, you know, looking when it comes back to the council. If it, if it makes it past here and gets the, the opportunity to come back, those are the issues that I'll be concerned with.
Uh, let's see, who's that? Councilmember Brown?
Uh, Mr. Fowler addressed, uh, my main concern is that the, the same type of business is not able to open up where the, right across the street. And then, of course, the, no outdoor displays, but my main concern is that another same-type business doesn't open up across the street.
And what assurances do we have with that one? Because I don't think Mr. Hudson owns the building across the street nor does Cash America, so what assurances?
The way I understood is through some zoning.
I mean, is that the case, is that true? I, I don't know.
Wouldn't that be the local government code one?
There are regulations on the location of, of these types of businesses and, and this business has the right to relocate because it's an existing business. It has the right to relocate within one mile. Uh, but, uh, a new business would not have the opportunity to locate there. But I'll, I'll brief, I'll, I'll brief the council on the PNZ on, on how that works.
Uh, Councilmember Grow.
Yeah, pawn shops can't be within a mile of each other, so there's a certain radius that they have to be outside of to be able to, to enter one. And Ace Cash is within that, but that was probably prior to Ace has been there forever, and Cash America's been there forever. And so, it was probably grandfathered in at some point in time. But the fact that this thing is coming up for its third time is ridiculous. You know, we, we had a, a vote. We said, we denied the, um, petition for zoning change. And it was clear, and then apparently people were confused, so we had it a second time, and it died again. So, the fact that it's coming up for the third time is pretty ridiculous. In the three years that I've been on this council, I have never seen this before. And so, this is getting to smell like special treatment or some other things, because I know that there are other people that were upset about not getting their way in this council. And, but they haven't come back. And so, so, I just don't know, okay? That's number one. Number two is, I think we already have enough pawn shops in the city. You know, we're about to have another one come across because it was, it's over in Fort Worth. It's, they purchased some property. Uh, it's already zoned, or the zoning for it exists, so there's nothing that this body can do to stop it, okay? So, it's already there. There are plenty of properties that Cash America can go and purchase that are already zoned C-four or M-one that'll allow them to purchase it. The only reason they would like to have Mr. Hudson's property is because it's a location across the street. So, the people that frequent that business do not have to go hunt it down. In my past experience as a law enforcement officer, pawn shops are awful. And Halton City already has six of them. It's about to have seven, including in Cash America. So, anything that we could do to provide as much friction for their operation, I'm all for. But the fact that it's coming in, again, is ridiculous. The other cities in this area, North Richardson Hills only has three, and they beat us by ten thousand citizens. And Watauga has one pawn shop. Keller has one. So, I don't know why these pawn shops are picking on Halton City. But if we wanna improve the way that Halton City is, anything to help them is, is bad. You know, let them work it out through the normal channels, things that are already laid out, and anything that we can do for this council, through this council, should be, you know, a hurdle that they have to get through. So, that's my feelings on this thing.
Thank you, Councilmember Grow. And just for clarification, that, that we said we have six pawn shops, four of those are located south of Broadway. Uh, Councilmember, who's next? Councilmember Watkins?
What did you just say? You were facing the other direction.
Oh, uh, Councilmember, uh, Grow said we have a total of six pawn shops within our twelve-point-four square miles. That's one every two miles. Four of those six pawn shops are located south of Broadway. But that was just for clarification.
Uh, okay, um, some more clarification because you, you said similar the last time, about how many times it been brought before us. It was brought before planning and zoning, and they approved it unanimously, uh, as it was presented to us. We in turn, turned it down as it was presented to us. Then, it was voted on to whether we were even going to hear it again. It's not like we've turned this down three times. Another question I have for former Officer Grow, how long has it been since you were on the police force?
Almost twenty years.
Uh, uh, from, it's my understanding from the, uh, few law enforcement officers that, that'll speak to me, that, uh, that there's been uh, enormous changes in the, uh, record-keeping, uh, what, what, and.
Oh, I'll, I'll tell you, it's called leads online. You know, when I was a detective, my, my responsibility was property crime. So, I got to visit all the pawn shops in this area, and I used to get tickets. And so, that's how they initially did it. And then, I went and, and Cash America was very kind, because they would send me a, uh, a data dump in a CSV file that I put into a database. And so, I was fairly efficient in hunting down property.
Well, I don't wanna insinuate that the, I will not insinuate that the other pawn shops in our city are not respectable. I'm merely saying that what we have here is a potential business, that it's already a business in our city, and that from what I can tell, they're getting next to no pro, they're having next to no problems. And they're, are they national, nationwide? Right, there, there, there's a bunch of them around.
Oh, they're, they're, they're a.
We're not talking about something that'll fly by night. But, but the main point, and, and once again, I'm being redundant, but, uh, Mayor Avery brought it up last time, and I think he agreed with me that we had not, we have not looked at this particular for approval or disapproval. We disapproved it once. We brought it up. We were going to hear it, and then we didn't. But we're not, if it goes to planning and zoning, and they bring it back to the PD, it will be a first time that we have addressed it as a PD, which I think is perfectly legal and, 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 and the, the fact that they can't build another one. They can move, they can move the one that they're in to where they're wanting to build, but they can't turn around and somebody else go open a pawn shop in that same place because it's gonna be too close. That's just not gonna happen.
That's correct.
Now, then, I was with you other night, so I'm gonna agree with you on that. But you and I listened to a case from planning zoning where they indeed were going to have to put another pawn shop.
Yep.
But, uh, this is, this is not apples and oranges, apples and rocks. Uh, there, there's a difference in this particular, uh, uh, agenda item to me, and, and if we, if we send it back to planning zoning, and they bring it back as a, as a planned development, that will be the first time and the only time so far that we have listened to it as a planned development. I think it's just a world of difference, and then if it comes time, I, I'll make the motion.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Watkins. And if I can just clarify something, what I was, the point I was trying to make at the last meeting when we were talking about this was the precedence. We've just, this is the third time we're now discussing this. Yes, we haven't voted, y'all haven't voted on it, but the one time, but this is a precedence that we're discussing it for a third time. Yeah, I want to, I'm just, I just want that to be for clarification. And you know, and, and I even, you know, discussed this with Mr. Mr. Hudson. You know, uh, after the last council meeting, it's not that if we have to have a pawn shop, I'd much rather have a Cash America than I would, you know, some, some other, because at least, uh, because they are, you know, a large corporation. I think they may conduct their business a little more ethically. And I'm not saying the other ones don't. I'm not saying that at all. I'm just saying, if we have to have a pawn shop, I'd much rather have a Cash American. I'm, I'm in no way, shape, or form advocating this at all. I'm just, that's just my opinion on it. I, the concern I have, and I expressed this to Mr. Hudson as well, it's, really has nothing to do with his property at all. I, the concern I have, and I expressed this to Mr. Hudson as well, it's, really has nothing to do with his property at all. It's the fact that we have so many south of Broadway. We have four. If you look at that, I, I don't, I don't know exactly what that, the square miles is for that area down there. But that is our most economically depressed area of town. And we have four pawn shops. We have, I believe it's two payday loan pla, uh, no, two payday loan places and one car rental place down there. So if you add all those together, that's seven south of Broadway. And that's not even dividing our city in half. That's less than half of our total square, you know, square, uh, our area we have this down there. So I, I would like for our, uh, planning and zoning to at least take that into consideration. Again, I'm not saying one way or the other regarding this application. I'm saying that I think long term, we should devise some type of a plan of action for those types of, those types of industries. Uh, who's next? Uh, Councilmember Fowler?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, to answer one question, I mean, I, I wasn't able to be here at this first September meeting, which is my fault. But, um, this, there's, there's nothing that guarantees this is gonna pass anyway. This is to send back for the planned development like we talked about. So, you know, everybody's gonna get an opportunity if, if it makes it that far through tonight. To come back and make amendments to it or vote for it and vote against it. So there's nothing that's, there's no done deal already, first of all. Second of all, is the applicant here?
No, Cash America's not here.
Well, are you the?
I'm the applicant. I, I also agree on it myself.
Okay, so you'd be the applicant then. And you are Mr. Hudson, right? Okay, and I guess, we talked about it earlier and I'm, I guess I'm guilty of special attention, uh, and, and I'll, I'll be the first one to accept that. I'm gonna show special attention to any business that's in this community and I don't care which one it is. I don't care if it's Mr. Hudson, even though he's been a, 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 you know, a member of the community for, you know, a great length of time. And they have other businesses. I think him and his family have businesses throughout the community and have for many, many years. Um, you know, but I'm gonna show special attention to any business that comes before this panel or this board. We're, you know, and it's, um, you know, would I rather it be a Starbucks? Heck yeah. Or would I rather it be, you know, a, a Kohl's? Sure. But that's not what's there right now. And so I think we need to take this based on the merit of this case and see is, does it fit the criteria of what we're trying to do? And is it, you know, so I think we all need to step back from it and look at, at least I'm going to. Um, are we, would you consider us much more than acquaintance?
No.
Have you ever financially donated to any campaign or anything I've ever done? But we don't wanna know.
Right, absolutely.
And, and you've called me and asked me about questions about it, what happened, this and that, what could you do to move this thing forward and this and that? I don't have a problem with that. I'll do that for any business, whether it's you, whether it's, you know, any business that's existing or trying to come into this community. I think we should all do that and be fair to it. So I guess, you know, I, I don't know that it's necessarily special attention, but it's a fact of, there's a lot of, um, you know, I was just a little surprised when it came up and there was not any discussion and it was voted out. And that was, that was, I was just, you know, and then it got brought, you know, questions got answered. I got asked questions, so therefore I thought it was, you know, maybe there was some miscon, misconception or, you know, misconception of what was trying to be put there. Um, I've looked at it and once again, you know, I'll critique it, no different than I think at that last meeting. I, I believe I had suggestions that, you know, and there's certain things, just like I've told you, Mr. Hudson, that have to happen before I'd even support it.
Absolutely.
So, um, I think we all just need to do that, step back, look at it and look at it based on just what's there. And is it gonna be an improvement? Does it fit the criteria of what we're trying to do in the city to make it better? Um, I just think that's the way we need to approach it, so.
And I will add, if I might, that we're not, one, it's, it's two businesses that are there. Uh, my business has been there twenty-five years, they've been there twenty-seven. There is four pawn shops south of Broadway right now. Even with this move, within the year, there'll only be three. You, it's, mo, most of you are aware that there's a pawn shop currently down there that is closing. That, and there will not be, and there cannot be another pawn shop put back in there as a new pawn shop. It can't happen because of the show needs law.
And, and I wasn't aware of that, so I appreciate you bringing that forth. I mean, so, um, but I, and I hate to put you on the spot, but I do appreciate you answering the question.
Absolutely. If anybody else has a question about it. And I'm glad you brought that up because we, I didn't, I wasn't aware of that until last week or the week before when you told me that. I mean, because, you know, like I said early on, my major concern was the number of pawn shops south, you know, south of Broadway. And I know Mr. Hudson for many years, he's a respectable member of our business community and he lived, family lives here for many years. And I hold you in the highest regard. And it was nothing against you or, you know, what you were trying to do down there, nothing against that at all. It's just the number of pawn shops that we have. But once I found out that one of the pawn shops in that area, you know, assumed, you know, seemed to, to go out of business, that makes it much more palatable anyway because we need to reduce the number of those types of businesses in that area. And with that being said, I go back to what I said earlier tonight. If we have to have a pawn shop down there, and I know I don't get to vote on this and it has to get through here to be sent back to the P and Z and then they gotta, you know, vote on it there. But if we have to have a pawn shop, I'd much rather have something like a Cash America down there. Uh, let's see, who's next? Uh, Councilmember, uh, Grow and then Dr. Trong.
Mr. Hudson, maybe you can explain how would this work? So it's a planned development on a piece of property that Cash America does not own currently. And, but my understanding is the contingency of them purchasing the property is they get the proper zoning or what?
The contingency of them purchasing the property is that it will be able to be zoned so that they can have a pawn shop, a pawn shop there.
So you would be the developer then or what?
Once-
Because it still has to get through here with that planned development.
Absolutely. And they will, they have came and spoken in front of y'all and said that they would adhere to whatever the planned development was, uh, prior to the purchase of it and agreeing on it.
Ms. Bachelor, has, have you ever seen this before where one party owns the property and presents a planned development that another party would have to adhere to?
Well, the way it'll be proposed with it being a PD is they would retain their C three zoning with allowed use of pawn shop. So nothing in the rest of the C four zoning would apply at this point. It would be their existing zoning of, of C three for planned development with allowed use of pawn shop. If Cash America doesn't buy the property, it's still a C three zoning. That doesn't mean that Mr. Hudson-
Okay, would that mean that a pawn shop can go in there if we put that plan? So, so technically then we are opening it up for a zoning change?
Yes.
Okay, so that's essentially a C four change?
No, you're, um, not allowing the other C four uses.
What are the other C four uses?
Uh, they pretty much, we looked at that earlier today. They pretty much mirror each other. There are some uses that are permitted in C four that is a conditional use on C three. But as far as, uh, uses in C three and C four, they pretty much go down the same line.
Other than pawn shop then?
On the matrix.
Okay, so, so basically we're turning into a C four? Say again?
Pawn shops are allowed in C four, M one and M two by right.
Okay, so, but then if with this planned development, we are essentially turning into a C four?
C three with pawn shop use.
Well, no, but it's, okay, but essentially it's a C four.
Just for that one use.
For that one use, but that, isn't that what a C four? You said C three and C four track evenly, other than C four has pawn shop.
Right.
So that would mean that we are adding pawn shop to a C three for this particular property?
Correct.
Essentially it becomes a C four?
Because of the use of allowing of pawn shop.
Okay, so then I would say that this is still circumventing what we decided months ago when we disapproved the initial C four zoning change. Would that be true? Would this be the same thing?
That's correct, because you're, you're going to allow the-
So, so again, why are we hearing this again after it already been disapproved before? They have, they can come back in a year. That's what all applicants that have been denied have a year to come back. So I don't understand. So, okay, thank you. I'll come up with something else.
Thank you, Councilmember Grow. Uh, Dr. Trong and then?
Uh, Ms. Bachelor, I look at on the item number thirteen here. I didn't see anything mentioned about Cash America. And Mr. Hudson come here tonight, just want the zoning change, right?
Correct.
Okay, and, uh, I want to see the city attorney explain to me. Uh, Ms. Grow already said, uh, we've been here three times. If the item we are voting tonight illegal or illegally done by city council?
No, it's, it's, it's legal. The council wants to allow this to be reconsidered.
Do we have a rule or regulation say you're not allowed to put the item back on that time or not?
No, you don't. Uh, what, what has? No.
No, okay. What I'm looking at today is that the zoning change. And I don't see why we bring up about Cash America. If we approve and approve just changing the zone, right? From C three to C four, correct, Ms. Bachelor?
That was what was presented and I believe, from what I'm hearing, is council wants to see it brought as a PD as opposed to just a straight zoning change to allow for the pawn shop use.
Yeah, just like the mayor said, he, uh, have learned that today we have one pawn shop closing, you know? And, uh, that's good news for Halton City too. And that's my question. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Dr. Trong. Uh, Councilmember Watkins?
Well, again, what, uh, Councilmember Grow alluded to was that the applicant can't bring it back for a year. This does not prevent, which we have done legally, for us to decide that we wanna hear it under a different zoning. We can do that. I think, I, I, I think Wayne disagrees with me, but if I had to and I was doing it, I'd go to court on him. I believe that the council has the right, not the obligation, or maybe they shouldn't do it. But I think that council has the right to bring it back several times if that's what we wish to do under a different, under different zoning. But we're arguing over, we're, we're spending a lot of time arguing over something. And I think that in, in all fairness to everybody concerned, uh, we're arguing over something that should be sent back to the, to the P and Z for their ruling. And then we can have this argument later down the road.
Yeah, I do agree with you regarding that, Councilmember Watkins. However, I do think we should be careful not to set precedent. We've already set precedents with this. So, I mean, I think that, you know, we should try and limit the number of cases we bring back before this council. And it, and when it was first brought before the council, it was a unanimous vote to turn it down at that time. And I believe it was a five to one vote to not hear it at the, uh, October ninth, I believe it was. Was it four to two? It was said five to one, but okay. Yeah. Okay, so it was a four to two. So now we're bringing it back up for a third time. Therefore, it's precedence. So with that being said, uh, moving, uh, Councilmember Grow?
Mr. Olson, so normally zoning changes, and this is gonna be a zoning change, it's essentially a zoning change.
Correct.
When you look at it, so is there state law that says it has to come back within a year for a zoning change? And this is just a, a, I guess, a tricky way of getting around state law?
No, uh, this is all controlled by your zoning ordinance, your zoning-
Okay, so that's, that's our law then?
It's your law.
Okay, so we're just going around circumventing our law?
This, this city council has adopted a rule that when a zoning case is denied, it may not come back again for one year with the same or similar application unless the city council denies it without prejudice. It gives the city council the, the authority to allow it to come back within a year. But if you don't-
So we had to kill it with, without prejudice, prejud-
Yes, you would, you would deny it without prejudice to allow the applicant to come back and reapply for the same or similar zoning within the one-year time period. Otherwise, your ordinance requires the applicant to wait one year.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, with that being said, any more discussion regarding this? Okay, we're in line for a motion.
Mr. Hudson, did you wanna say something? Because you looked like you wanted to say something after I was done.
I did, but I lost my train of-
Okay, I, I'm, I'm, I'm with the same, I'm, okay.
When it came back to you the second time?
Yep.
Uh, it was because Dr. Trong said that it was his opinion that he made a motion for a second to approve. And he sent an email-
And that, and that's what I said. Initially, when I said, when the first time, when I disapproved it, everybody voted for it. And then it came back because some people were confused about it and then it got killed a second time. And so again, nothing I've said has been factually incorrect. So we're here at a third time for this thing, okay? But I just want to, you just looked like you wanted to say something after I said-
But factually incorrect as to if it was a unanimous decision that night on the first time it was heard.
Yep.
According to Dr. Trong, it was not.
Well, the vote is the vote.
Right, the vote is the vote, but he actually sent an email saying that his opinion was that he was seconding for an approval.
Uh, can I add on, ma'am?
Yes, sir, Dr. Trong.
That's where my fault. I did not listen carefully. I, I believe, uh, Councilman Grow say no. But I, I don't know what happened. I just feel like he said, yeah, that's why I vote, I told you the truth, you know?
Absolutely. And with that being said, all I'm asking for is to be open-minded. Look at the facts that are out there, look at the circumstances that are out there. You have two businesses that have been here a long time that are not going anywhere, that are gonna stay in this city and continue to, to do business in this city. Uh, and we're just asking for you to take a look at it. And, and, you know, we know that there's a pawn shop leaving. There'll only be three pawn shops south of Broadway at that point. Uh, and I think it's productive for that area. My building is the best-looking building down there by far. Cash America is in a, in a crummy building that needs to be updated. And that if they were to move into my building and spend half a million dollars upgrading it, the current owner of their property right now would have to bring that building up to code. No questions about that. And they're a Wall Street company. How many Wall Street companies are on Twenty-Eighth Street? Zero without them. And I think it's a good move for us as a city to keep somebody that is willing to spend that kinda money down there. I would like to ask Councilmember, oh, did you wanna follow up?
Well, okay, they're, they're the best bottom feeder. Let's, let's look at it in reality. And so they, if, if they're, they specifically wanna move, they don't go anywhere else but lower-income cities. They have no desire to go into Keller, South Lake, Collieville because they haven't opened up any of there. They stay within certain areas, North Fort Worth, Halton City, because they know they can, it's good business. And so, yes, you're right, they're a nationally traded NASDAQ, or not NASDAQ, um, Dow Jones.
Wall Street?
Yeah, Wall Street traded, well, Wall Street, but they're, they're a traded company. Yes, they got a, but ultimately it's the bottom line. You know, they don't care about, all it is is profit and loss, whatever they can, to make sure. Because they gotta, they gotta listen to the street. It's, it's a lot different than a mom and pop pawn shop because they're more invested in the community. You know, the people that work there are great. I've always had good experiences with them when I was a police officer because they're just doing their job, you know? And so I have nothing against them, you know, because there is a definite need. But, you know, I have my own opinions about them.
Absolutely, and you're right to your own opinions. There are big cities that have pawn shops such as Cash America. Keller may be one that doesn't. Arlington has several. Arlington's a big progressive city. You know? In fact, uh, just, uh, yeah, uh, just for clarification, of the vote on, uh, September, Councilmember Thompson wasn't here, she wasn't on the council yet, uh, Councilmember Fowler was away. And Councilmember Watkins is the only one who voted to deny it, who's since changed his vote to rehear it. Correct, okay. So, uh, Councilmember, uh, Councilmember Fowler?
Okay, just for clarity, so it was heard as a C four, straight zoning, correct, Ms. Bachelor, on the first hearing in September?
Yes, sir, from a C three to C four.
C three to C four. Then it was asked, is reheard as C three to C four?
Correct.
Okay, and when we're in line for a motion, it would be based on ordinance, based on the ordinance number to be denied with prejudice?
Denied without prejudice.
Without prejudice.
And sent back to P and Z as a PD.
As a planned development, as a proposed planned development.
PD C three with pawn shop use.
Right, which would, if the stipulation was placed on it, that it not be allowed to move forward to a secondary owner, it would have to, at the termination of Cash America, whenever their CEO lapsed at whatever period, one month, ten years, a hundred years, that that would not move forward as a pawn shop. Is that correct?
That would be a question for legal on whether we could make that stipulation.
You, you could consider rezoning the property at that time, and you could put the, you could put Cash America on notice that that's your intent to rezone it for no pawn shop use after they terminate their use out there.
Use as a planned development. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, we are in line for a motion, if there's no other discussion regarding this. Councilmember Fowler.
Mayor, I'd like to move, uh, to deny ordinance number O dash two zero one seven dash O two one dash one five without prejudice as a proposed C-four to be sent back to the Planning and Zoning Commission as a planned develop- C-three planned development with pawn shop use to be brought back to, uh, city council, uh, after consideration of the planning and zoning.
Now, Wayne, is this, because Councilmember Fowler, earlier you s- you stipulated no outside storage?
No, that was for recommendations to the Planning and Zoning Commission, if they would choose to consider that.
Is that something that we need to have put into a motion, or is that something that's enough?
That's up to Councilmember Fowler, whether he wants to put it in his motion, or just send it back and let them make recommendations.
I'll allow them to make recommendations.
Okay. So, everyone's heard the motion, uh, we're-
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, not to interrupt, but I think Ms. Bachelor could, as the, uh, representative of our staff, uh, I think you could pass that along to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
My notes.
You took notes, and they would have an idea of what we were, you know, kind of looking towards. So if you wouldn't mind in my motion to just allow you to present that to Planning and Zoning, some of the things that would be, you know, we would like to ask them to consider.
I got that, and, uh, Cash America's, uh, use is non-transferable, something of that nature. I'll get with Wayne for verbiage.
Okay, uh, we have a motion. Uh, let's see, who's next? Councilmember Thompson.
That's for a second, mayor.
Okay, motion for approval in a second. If you would, please signify your votes. So what is that, six to one, six to send it back, and one, no. Okay. That goes back to the, uh, P and Z. Moving on along to our visitors and citizens forum, we have Mr. Francis, so he's not here. Uh, resignation of board members? Didn't see we had any. Appointments or reappointments? Doesn't matter, I mean, I can do it. Uh, regarding the, the Economic Development Corporation, I'm a member of that board, uh, for the next I have a conflict on Thursday nights for the next, which is eleven weeks now, for the next eleven weeks, so not quite three months, so that would put us into, uh, what is that? April? I will be unable to attend any of the EDC meetings, and I'm asking for the, uh, city council to either leave me on there with excused absence, or consider a, a, my replacement. Either way works, works fine for me. Just, I didn't wanna, I've missed a meeting, I didn't want to just continue on. I think that's inappropriate for myself to put, you are also the EDC members in that position. Uh, Councilmember, uh, you came for Watkins, oh, Councilmember Watkins.
It's under the circumstances that you, that you're already sure that you can't make it, and because there are so many things happening, uh, I would, uh, make the motion to accept your resignation.
Okay, do we, okay, uh, motion, we need to, if you would, please signify your votes. Unanimous, okay. Now moving on to appointments or reappointments.
There weren't even resignations.
No, there were none. Yeah, okay, so, no one has any appointments or reappointments. I'm working on an appointment to the Housing Authority. I should have that at the next, uh, council meeting. Okay, and seeing no other adj- uh, business, we will adjourn at, what time is it? Nine forty-five.